Thursday, March 6th, Davidson County Commissioner meeting I called ordered. Vice Chair Watford, it's your turn for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you, my pleasure. I was thinking yesterday about a favorite hymn of mine, and it was called "In Times Like These", and some of you might be familiar with it, so I'll begin with that, "In Times Like These", try to be in a positive. Join me, dear Heavenly Father, I pray that you will give every leader strength here and throughout our country, so that we do not grow weary in our leadership roles. Help us to lead out of the overflow of love for others that is selfless, and turn our hearts toward you, that you would help us to lead with integrity and grace, always acting in ways that reflect your love and justice. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Watford, that was good. Register for public address. If you want to do so, it's right here. Adoption of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Here none, may I have a motion?
Seven minutes.
A second?
Second.
All right.
Need the motion?
Seven minutes.
Fred, do you want to recognize the veterans this morning?
Do we have any, do we have any veterans with us this morning? Okay. When it gets called, they just stay home, I guess.
There you go. Did we take a vote on that? I'm sorry Debbie, Steve showed me something over here and got me off track. Did we take a vote on the agenda? I don't think we did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. All right, public address, anything on the public address here, Jason?
Yes, we have one speaker.
Sorry about that, shell, I forgot that this morning, man. Think there's a whole lot here probably. Hurley? Janice Hurley? Maybe?
Good morning, I'm Janice Hurley, and I have the privilege of leading DC Connect, and we have our annual report, and I just wanted to share that we've seen over 3,000 different Davidson County residents, and connected them to resources, and I would love for you to just be able to see it and to see the work that we do. Thank you.
Do you have a copy for us?
Yes.
All right, if you'll bring it up.
Thank you, I'll scan it and send it to all of you.
Okay, thank you, all right. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. All right, Casey?
Sir.
Yes.
It's time, once again, to start up this budget process, and you guys get together every March and talk about where we are, with all of it, in terms of the general fund and big projects and things like that, so that's the deck you have in front of you today. No back, no backside flipping this time, only front side flipping.
Good.
So I got them, it took me three years to get it right, but I got it, okay? All right.
Took a couple more trees, but you done it.
Right, few more trees, but it's not, it's more convenient, so. The deck is not as big as you'll notice in the past. A little more condensed down because we've talked about our issues so much during the year that it kind of gets to this point where, I hate to say it, it's kind of trimming on the margins. So I'm gonna walk through this, stop me at any point and ask questions, feel free. I'm gonna zip through some parts of it a little quicker. I use a lot of shortcut things on these slides, so if something makes sense, stop me and say, "Casey, what is that?", and I'd be glad to walk through it, so. I'm gonna get started, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right, let's start with general fund revenues, and I'm only talking really predominantly about general funds this morning. We're not gonna get into landfill fund, transportation, things like that, because as you know, those funds run on their own, essentially run on their own revenues. The landfill operates on the charges it generates from tip and fees. Transportation, for example, runs on the grants, we've all talked about this before, that they get from the state and federal government. So largely with the general fund, the one that's got the tax rate that applies to it. So let's look at where we are right now. If you'll flip on to page three, Jason, go ahead. So I always like to start with kind of the "how do you get your money?" concept. And I'm not gonna go through every revenue in the county, I just want to highlight the two or three big ones that we've got that drive the train around here in terms of spending. What this one here is, what you're looking at is property values, and you got a nice snapshot of now almost 20-year look at kind of property values. You can see with your eyes the growth in the county and how we grow. All these years were 54 cent tax rates, and you can see the revales. I circled them in between the bars where they occurred for that particular year. So we had a rebound in 2007, 2008, that produced about a 20% jump at that time. We had one in '21, '22 that was a 15%, and then the one in the middle there is when I first got here, and it was essentially even, it was basically no growth. I mean, that point, that 1%, I think it's around, if you extend it out a couple decimal points, it's below. Look over to the right, and you see the green and orange. So where you see it says 25 adopted, that's the budget. So that's the budget that's driving our property tax that we're putting in to fund the government. You can see that bar staying below the blue, that's by design. I'll keep repeating that over and over all morning long, that's by design. So we're not taking all the funds that are available there. And those funds are moved to do our large capital projects, as you'll see in just a little while. The estimated actual is the orange bar for this year, so obviously you can see higher than the green, and kind of where the proposed budget may be looking like next year for the green. Not a lot of movement, as you can see. And you'll see why as I get further deep into this deck. Good growth going in from '24 to '25, some of that's thanks to David and his staff, just under 4%. It's them getting the collections up as well. So you saw email yesterday with his delinquent stuff, and where he, percentage he had collected through the year was pretty high. So good job for the tax farm.
So and this gonna push the total tax value up to what, Casey, close to what?
Uh, the orange bar, if it kind of gets close, we're headed toward $20 billion, almost. And you can see, when I started here in 2015, we were probably around 13. So in 10 years, we've moved it $7 billion.
Right, okay.
And in 20 years, it's moved almost double. You can see the low end blue bar all the way to the left-hand side of the page is barely over 10. So in 20 years, it's doubled. Flip over to four for me. Another thing that drives the train of making property tax revenue around here is obviously the building and construction. Here's another snapshot of these building, these permits, building permits, from 2009 to kind of where we are now. What I want you to see is, it's good steady growth, of course it dips down in 2010 and '11, and you guys know why, we had an economy that kind of took a hit back in 2008 and '09, and bled on into us for quite some time till it kind of, you see it stayed level, 4,300 permits in 2010, 4,800 in 2015, not a lot of difference. After 2015, you can see the movement, starts to move up and grow. You guys made the two notes there, you can see, we've got the green bars over here to the side. Interest rate change in March of 2022, that makes a big hit to housing because that increased, and then you guys reduced the lot sizes shortly thereafter in August of 2022. So those two factors together, now I'm not, I'm not know which one's driving which one harder, probably the interest rate if I was a betting man. People just ain't buying as many homes because the interest rates are higher. So that is explaining away the green bars over to the right being, you see you were almost 13,000 permits just three years ago. High, very high, it's reduced down, but not, you know, 9,500 is where we're expected to look, still higher than where we've been. So the growth's cut, but not cut by much, and some of that, again, by design. Fed's doing their thing, you guys doing the lot sizes. Flip on over to five. Go ahead.
I got a question, is this permits in the county or is this city permits as well?
No, the county.
Just the county?
Yeah.
Okay, so we could have some growth in the city that's not showing up here in these permits.
Good, right, right.
What about the cities, the municipalities, they utilize our inspection department?
Uh, they would be picked up in this, so Bo, if he, Bo's in here, whatever he's doing, if you're doing anything for some other cities inside these numbers? Like, are we doing any building inspection stuff for Denton or anybody like that, or Midway?
Yeah, we're doing Midway, Wal-Mart.
So be excluding the two big ones, probably Thomasville and Lexington?
Right.
Yeah. Or anybody that's got their own building inspection department, you know, that's running their own thing? Flip on over to page five, so that drives property tax revenue, just remember that as we get further into the deck. Another big, another big revenue driver is sales tax. And so on page five, what you're looking at is, you hear this on the national news all the time, consumer spending, and 60% of our national economy is consumer spending. You know, if people stop buying things, that creates a problem. Well, this is the consumer spending of Davidson County, is what you're staring at here, and you can see it's in the billions. We crossed over a billion, I don't know, a handful of years ago, now we're at $2 billion worth of consumer spending in the county. But what I want you to see is those red areas there where the growth changes, that's kind of what I'm eyeballing, and I circled the one to the right for a reason. So you got 22 actual, 23 actual, 24 on these blue bars. Up at the top, you got the growth between those blue bars, you see? So you grew 11% from '22 to '23. And some of that was state law changes where they made more things available to be sales tax eligible, but 11% growth, and then a kind of a slowdown from '23 to '24, 3% growth. This is something we eyeball because we can't control it, you know, the people's spending habits are a little bit fickle, they can move around. Look at the green bars from December to December to December, you see that 3% change from '23 to '24, and it didn't yield anything by year-end, right? 3% from December to December, and it stayed that way as we ended the year. But look at the one I circled, coming out of December, a half a point down. So just remember that in your mind. Now, will we gonna finish a half a point down? I don't know, but I just know the slowdown's starting inside these numbers. And we'll get into the collection piece of that, and that doesn't always translate into the collection piece, again, because state law has point-of-sale and things like that, that we get per capita revenues on some of these. So just because we, just because we're seeing a little bit of a slowdown here, it won't always mean we're gonna see complete slowdown on the other side. But we're not growing at the double-digit rate, sales tax-wise, that we were just a few years ago. And it was fast, it was just a few years ago. You guys remember that, I mean, I don't even know, we were in this room two or three years ago, and we saw double-digit growth, so, just like that. And that's why, when you're budgeting sales tax, you don't want to take it all. You want to leave a little room because you don't know what these numbers can do. It's on a dime, they can go down. Go ahead and turn to six. Those, the values and the building inspections and things like that, the local economy drive this property tax numbers here, and this is kind of your regular just property tax collections. Again, I mentioned 3.9% growth, let's call it four. You got 23 actual, 24 actual, you see the growth between them. You see our budget, much lower than the actuals, again, for the reason, we'll get to the reasons here later. And then kind of where we think we're gonna end this year, is the green bar. So that 15.8 million line right there I'm drawing is from your budget to reality. So remember that number, let's just call it 16. $16 million that we're not taking out of these. Is everybody with me? That's gonna go to some major projects here, in just a few minutes, I'm gonna show you where they go. Good steady, these things are steady too, by the way. I mean, property tax, I mean, most people obey the law and pay their bills, right? So we can count on this stuff 99% of the time. Very easy to predict where you're gonna land because you about know the number's gonna be. The sales tax a little tougher. Flip over to this seven, and the sales tax's got a lot of colors and a lot of pieces here, so hang with me. A little bit more than we've shown in the past. I broke it down into every article that's collected, and you got one, two, three, four, five of them. Forget the blue parts just for a second, and focus, let me, stay with me on the different colors that are sitting on top of each bar. We've got Article 40, 42, 44, and 46. Let me do 44 and 46 first because they're easier. So everybody knows about 46 is the quarter cent that got put on for Oak Grove. The debt gets paid out of that, anything left goes to education. And we do that a lot of times in the spring, if we see that we have, we've budgeted and we've been real conservative and there's going to be more, you guys have been in this room and we've approved, you know, one-off air-condition fixes for the college, or for the county schools, or something like that. We spend what we make on that source. Is everybody with me? So we don't keep any of that money, we do not put it back into our fund balance. For Article 44, same thing, it's the one that got redistributed from the state several years ago. It's the one that got redistributed from the state several years ago. Probably now going on five years ago, if you guys remember, and those of you on the board probably don't remember, but the state redistributed that. They changed the laws, took more money from the big urban counties and gave them to the smaller rural counties. Not that we're small, but we were a big beneficiary of that law change. That has to be used for education and economic development, according to the law. And that's what we do. We budget it for things that we're doing, paying incentives or offsetting our, some of our costs for education or capital projects for the schools or the college. When I say education, the college can be in that mix as well. For forty and forty-two is a little bit different. And in the past, I've never really broke this one out for you, but I want you to see it now because it's going to come into play in the future as we have debt fall off. The statutes say that for Article forty, you have to spend thirty percent of those collections, you can spend it for school debt or capital. And for Article forty-two, sixty percent for school capital. The rest can be the county's. We've always had plenty of debt on our books for the schools to account for those funds. As time goes on and debt falls off, that's the source it's coming from. Is everybody with me? So we will have, we can make choices. Now, you guys have, I know this is getting a little bit more numbers-wise, just imagine this in your head. As debt falls off, you've already fronted some of it because you spent fourteen million dollars on Lexington Middle School. We have a planned part of our, of this major capital projects list where we would like to give infusion of cash to the four of them. So you've already fronted some of this savings, if that makes sense. So you have a choice. You can do one of two things. You can say, I have already fronted those savings, that is county money now, in my opinion. Or two, slacking debt gives you the ability to choose if you wanted to sell more debt for schools. And the budget stays exactly the same where you're living today. So you know how this works. If you've got a budget on something, but you save off that budget, you go buy something else, you're right back to where you started. You're not necessarily hurting yourself, if that makes sense. You're not spending more. So you guys have that choice, but you've already fronted some of these dollars by doing some of these, such large capital projects with essentially pay-go money. Lot of counties borrow to do what you did at Lexington Middle School, you guys paid cash for. So just remember that in your mind, it's the future. I'm talking in the next few years comes about, not the now. This is not a problem today, this will be in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, not even a problem, it's a choice. I just want y'all to know, we have a, we got a plan to cover. So the blue part at the bottom is essentially the county piece, the county money that we're, that we eyeball to go, alright, this is what's got to fund the government. And I circled over to the right, it is, it is slowing down. It's, it's running at about two percent collections, which is a little different than the half a percent drop, I know. And like I told you, I don't know that you're going to see it, it'd line up exactly perfect, but we're not running ten percent collections anymore. It's down to about two, one and a half or two. I think we can generate probably another five and a half, six million off of that, that's why I circled that. So remember the property tax number savings, sixteen, and remember this one. Because those two numbers together, those are the overages that we're using to fund these large capital projects and other initiatives inside the government. Whether you guys have done pay studies or things like that, and you're doing it all out of these slacks and living off your natural growth to do COLAs, fund the schools and those kinds of things. Flip on over. Office, so hopefully one day, if this, I mean, I lived through two thousand eight where I worked in Wake County, we had to cut the current year budget at the time and then ask the county, ask the county departments to give us cuts for the budget we were building at the same exact time because it was so bad. We weren't going to make it in the middle of the year we were living in, and we knew it. So we were like, and I didn't think I'd ever seen anything like that. So to build tools to see that coming, a mile away, so you see, um, so you don't get caught going, we never even saw this coming, and we can't, now we're back. Because you know, as the fiscal year goes along, if you don't start, if you had a problem like that and you don't start cutting, the worst problem's going to be if you try to do it in April and May. You need to see it along ahead of time. So what we've got is this, what we call dashboard for property tax revenue, sales tax revenues, and we use it for salaries in the county. The blue bar is the expected budget laid out based on history of when those dollars have come in in the past. We've built up now seven, eight years' worth of data in these files. So we know the trend of when property tax revenue comes in. The green line is the actual collections. And on revenue, you want the green line to be above the blue bars. Below the blue bars means you didn't make your budget, right? That's the problem. Green line above the blue bar on revenues is good, it's going to be the inverse on salaries in a minute. You want it below. So you can see green line doing pretty good on property tax revenue. There's David's four percent. Majority of this money comes in by late summer because we got the discount. So most of these people pay by September, October, where we've already collected, you know, ninety-plus percent. On the sales tax, we have a refund month always, it takes a dip, so don't worry about that. Um, that's nonprofits and hospitals and things like that. But there's your collection right now, year-to-date, about two and a, I'm just calling it two and a half. So I can't remember two point seven, I don't know if you guys remember all these numbers or not, but I, I can remember. So there again, clearing the blue bars, nice. But it's one of those things, if we see a month that goes down, you can see how valuable this tool could be. If you catch a month going below, that's where Tim will come to me and go, I think I just spotted a problem in these numbers. And then you see it again the next month, that's what's called a trend. And then we know, uh-oh, we got a problem here, something's going on. We're not collecting what we thought we was going to collect. And then we can be to you guys and be, we got to make a plan. Um, flip on over. That's, that's revenues. There's some other revenues that are, that I'll touch on in just a little while that you need to be aware of. Interest, because the federal government's allowing, you know, got the percentages up, the basis points up so high, we're collecting more interest and not spending that as well. So that's helping to be part of funding these major capital projects, um, and fund balance. That's another one I want to touch on as we move on, go ahead.
How much of in the, in the year are we anticipating taking out of our so-called savings account?
We, we ain't, zero.
And we take any last year?
No, the percentage went down, but we added dollars. And remember how that percentage works? Your budget at the time divided by the denominator, which is your savings. If you increase that pers, if you increase that budget because you're taking this slack here and transferring it out to capital reserve, you're going to increase your budget artificially. That makes the percentage go down, but you may have added dollars to your reserve. Does everybody see what I'm saying? We kind of walked through this the other day when we did the CAFRA and showed the percentage down. Now, we're not going to transfer as much, Tim's going to have to slow down just a little bit because of some of this slowdown. But we're not, we'll probably get our percentage back to the high fifties by, by this time next year. We're at fifty now, fifty percent basically fund balance. And I like to keep it at that number if I can. I've worked too hard to get it to fifty because when I started, it was thirty-two. And that's great. I mean, we have a fund balance policy of eighteen, or, or, I think it's, yeah, eighteen. So we want to stay, you know, I don't want to get, I don't want to watch it go down, but I know why it went down last year. It was artificial because we're moving these extra revenues over to another place. Once we stop doing that, that percentage is going to go back up automatically.
So eighteen, what is necessary to, to, uh, continue, continue the triple A rating?
Uh, no, they use a lot of other factors with that. If you got down to eighteen, they would never let you, they wouldn't get, you know, we've changed our rating a couple of times. Moody's has give us a little bit better rating because we've crept the fund balance up. Well, we get dinged on a little bit, and we've done better with this because the economy's getting better. Household income, they look at that, and we've been raising ours due to y'all bringing in all the industry and everything else. Um, sometimes if you, if your liquidity, if your liquidity went down like that, that would probably, they wouldn't like that, no. And if you go, state law is, I think, sixteen percent now. It used to be eight. And I say state law, that was their recommendation from the LGC. It used to be eight for a longest time, and now they're doing it by size of county, so ours is sixteen. So it matches nice to our policy anyway, which is eighteen. Um, but we, when I got here thirty-two, we, and I'll show you a fun, I'm going to show you a fund balance slide here in just a minute of what it's been for the last fifteen years. And you can see it fluctuate just a little bit. But now fifty, and I say, dare say, come next January, probably going to be fifty-seven, fifty-eight, somewhere in that range. And that's my goal, is to keep it there. I don't want to see, you know, I don't want to be accused of, by John Q. out here of, at ninety percent, you're just, you know, you have all these funds available, why can't you do X, Y, Z? We have plans to help things by law, we're going to do like school buildings and things like that, that you'll see in a minute. So I, in my opinion, we're not, we're not neglecting those things. Um, you got choices when this debt falls off of running the next, you know, running a, a debt sale. That's, that's something you guys can do.
Casey, that's a great explanation because you can't base stuff like a continued expense, like, um, just any expense that we would have that were, would, that would require a year, yearly funding out of those percentage fund balance that we might have over here that could grow or decrease.
Right.
So that's a great explanation for those people listening.
If you have to go to fund balance, best thing you go for is for one-time stuff.
That's right.
Like you were dire straits and you had to buy a piece of equipment or one-time thing, that would be, that's a good use for it.
It's a great point.
If you're living off fund balance, that, like some counties have to do in North Carolina, that's not a good sign. That means structurally, you got problems in your budget. You made, you got your own issues to do, and we are not in that position. So that's, I don't know how many counties live like that, I just know, and you would be surprised, it's not always the small ones. Sometimes the bigger counties run on the razor's edge, um, because they end, what they end up doing is appropriating all of that revenue. I just showed you, they end up appropriating it for programmatic things in the general fund, for example. And then when they need to build a school building, they don't have the funds to do it, they got to go borrow.
Mm-hmm.
See what I'm saying? You can't have both unless you're going to raise taxes. So you guys have done the smart thing, you have programmatic things you do in the general fund, very strategic, and then you've got your cashier to, you're helping for these big projects.
What it amounts to, they're just spending it faster and they're bringing it in.
Correct, that's the easier way of saying it, right. Right. They're not, they're not paying attention to the in and out good enough. You can't, and again, I don't know, sometimes I wonder, you see how I've laid this out here? I'm not saying that I'm doing this the greatest, I'm saying you can see it. If you can't see it coming in a big set of numbers, how do you know?
That's right.
You know, imagine the federal government when you're dealing in trillions of dollars. You know, of course, you know you're out of balance with them because you're running a debt. You know, you have forty trillion in di, in debt, so you know it's out of balance.
And that's a fine example. I mean, they're spending it more than they bring in.
Right. And if that number keeps increasing every year, it's the obvious answer. You know, they need, they need to balance their budgets like states have to do and just like you guys have to do. Because then they would have to say no to some initiatives or stop it, or we can't do this, or we better have a better plan. That's the big revenues. Flip over to page nine, let's, or ten, let's skip on nine, it's just a header. And let's just look at what drives the expenses in this place on the general fund. So it, big, two big expenses on ten is salaries. Most of our expenses go to our employees. That's our big cost driver. Education, employees, and debt service, them three big pieces. If you took them threes out, I mean, I'm, dare say, that's the majority of our one hundred and seventy million dollar general fund budget. So same thing with this dashboard, except the opposite way of looking at it. Green line needs to be below the blue bar. That's what we want here. We don't want to overspend. You see what I'm saying? If the green line's going above the blue bar, you're spending more than you're, than you're bringing, or you're supposed to. We got two check, two, three check months, that's why them two bars are higher, I circled them in red for you. And at the top, you can see FY twenty-four, year-to-date through the green lines through February, this was what we spent, twenty-six and a half million. Now, I'm talking about just salaries, this is not the, uh, insurance, retirement, and everything else on top of it, FICA, just salaries. The FY twenty-five budget, thirty-one and a half, and we've, we're at, right now, we're up about thirty. Part of that is DSS and Sheriff's Office actually getting better with their vacancy rates. I think Sheriff's Office has moved down now to under double digits, like six or seven percent. And you guys just heard at the last board meeting, DSS has got the foster care side now getting about full. If the IMC side and the child welfare side starts to work like that, then there's, these salaries are going to go up against the budget a lot closer. Right now, we've generated what I call vacancy savings to the tune of about one point four million. But that can shrink once DSS starts to get, because we're, we're cooking it now, you look at the bottom note here, uh, I put it over the right-hand side. As of March, eighty-nine vacant positions in the general fund are nine, nine and a half percent. I look back, it's been three years since we were under a hundred.
Wow.
And the bulk of that in the last three or four weeks has been DSS. So if that number continues to go down, our vacancy rate, I mean, we're nine and a half, I'll take it. Now, back in the day, and I say the day, that was just a few years ago, five percent was what we used to be, six percent, four, four and a half. I think those days might be gone. You know what I mean? No, no county in North Carolina's running it, that I, well, maybe not all of them, but most of them ain't running at four and five. Most of them are at double digits. So we just went under double digits for the, and which is a big deal. And then I, if you look over to the left-hand side, when I build the budget, because we've approved positions and we've had hard times, fill-ins, et cetera, what I do when I build them is I take the salaries, let's say for, um, for Sheriff's Office. I get a download of everybody that works there, every position, and then add the vacant positions that are to it and load that into the budget. But then I go make a, what I call a crackerjack guess as to how many vacancies do I think they're going to run during the year? They're not going to have them all fill, especially in these bigger departments, DSS, public health, Outen, Sheriff's Office, they're not going to run full one hundred percent employment for twelve straight months. My office might because we're five people, but not them. So I go into those bigger ones and I say, okay, instead of cutting the positions out just yet, let me pull the dollars back. Because in case they start to fill them, at least they have the authorization to do it, and I'll deal with the dollars. But I start pulling back some of the dollars, and you can see how much vacancy rate I pulled out, two point two million dollars, which is about forty, let's just call it forty-five positions. So I've got half of this eighty-eight or eighty-nine already kind of out, if that makes sense. It's the other part, as she fills up, or, you know, DSS in particular fills up, I'm going to have to let my foot off that gas just a little bit. I can't do two point two million dollars if she starts getting to ninety percent full. It's just something I have to watch internally, because once they start onboarding in their work here, we're going to be paying, correct? So, you know.
So that means the green line would go up.
It would, and it means I got to let, if she, if she stayed that way for seven, eight, nine months, maybe I can't do two point two million dollars. You know what I mean? So that's, I'm, I'm always cautious with that number because I could do more, as you can see from the top right-hand side, Mr. Chairman, I could do a little more. But think about what I did, and think about that for a second. It's the reason why I want, that's the reason why I do these types of things for y'all. When I first got here, we kind of, we don't know that we got this deep on these topics, but think about what I just said. If you, if you're pulling two point two million dollars out of the budget to start with, and Trish gets better at hiring, and your, your vacancy savings goes down, and you, you're going to have to pull, you have to let, I call it let off the gas. If not, you're going to have a problem. Or if you do the opposite, if you take this savings and go, wow, we got one point four million dollars of vacancy savings, she'll run vacancies like that for the rest of the, it ain't never going to get no better. Then we go spend that one point four million dollars, and she does fill up. We just doubled it. We just caused a double whammy problem. That's why we watch this.
And you said, uh, what was not included in this?
Not the fringes. Because that can get it all skewed up and, and kind of, I wanted, because you think about it, they all follow the salaries. So if you, if you got a salary problem, you automatically know, I got a FICA problem, I got a retirement problem. You know, maybe not an insurance problem.
But why wouldn't you include this, sir?
Well, because everybody selects different plans on certain things, the sheriff's got a different retirement. This is, just gives me a flat apples-to-apples, I can know, I can see it clear, you know.
But I can tell you this, you got an average.
Amen.
You got an average, you can average what everybody's at, and that's pretty easy to get to.
Yeah. I just, well, like I said, if this gets off, you can rest assured the other two are, you know they're off.
Because I think when you add those in, you're going to still be pretty close to the top of the line.
Mm-hmm.
Or the budget would move too. So it probably would, it probably would just proportionally just move the whole chart like this up. Um, but it's like I told Tim when we built this thing years ago, I said, if these salaries get off, we know, we will see it coming, and then we know to stop the train or come to the board and go, whoa, 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 whoa. We've got, you know, I can see it on the dashboard on the revenue side, pretend that, go back to two thousand and eight. The dashboard on the revenue side gets lopsided and out of whack. And this one's, we do, we do more hiring, because you guys know, once the economy gets kind of low out here, people come to the government to work. And so you could have that kind of problem too, where the charts on the revenue one get off, and this one gets off too, and then you've got, whoa, 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 whoa. We, we got, we got to come to the board with a plan, maybe not, we can't do all this stuff.
Why does it show so low in July?
It's like a third, uh, it's just a piece of a check. It's like an accrual, you know, if you only have a certain amount of days that go over, bleed over that fiscal year.
I got you.
You only go back and pay, maybe it only, depends on how our pay period's filed, maybe four days or not a whole pay period.
By because the budget's in June.
Right, right. This is a great chart. This is a great thing to see for us internally. Again, we use this a lot internally to be able to see what's going on. Flip over to number eleven. So debt, and we just kind of touched on that, but now you can see it. That's another big cost for us and a changing cost for us going forward because blue bars are existing debt. We have to pay, so it's just like paying our mortgage. Um, orange is the Oak Grove debt that's already done as well. And so the green is now borrowing for a new detention center option that needs to come to the jail committee, and I've just put these numbers in here so we can see them. So we'll talk about what that option means here in just a little while, but I want you to have the numbers here. But you can see in twenty twenty-five, there's the budget, twenty twenty-six, there's kind of where we think. Twenty twenty-six, that's kinda where we thinking about a budget needs to be. It clips up just a tad in twenty-seven and then like a roller coaster rides right down. And so that riding down is where I put the red bar there, you, you got some capacity that you build up five and a half million dollars between FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-nine. I checked with Ryan, our, uh, market guy that does the Salesforce. If you went to the market with five and a half million dollars today, you could probably pull fifty-four million dollars, let's call it fifty-five. So you could borrow that much and send the bars right back to the highest one, which is twenty-seven, does that make sense? You'd be right back to where you're about to live now, you wouldn't go past that. Um, that is a potential place for some selling of some debt for schools. Cause remember what's funding that is that sales tax on them other slides. But also remember, you fronted cash for big school projects. You could make the claim, no, 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 the five and a half million dollars is the county's. We've done this in cash already.
These numbers to the left, is that debt with interest or is that just pure debt? That's debt and interest?
Yep, yep.
Per year?
Yep.
Debt and interest per year.
With the green one being the, the variable, because, you know, I don't know for sure, we ain't at the market. The, the orange and blue's locked in, done. I just colored that orange, cause y'all know, y'all will actually the Oak Grove. Actually, Oak Grove comes off in the middle of the next decade, it's done. Um, so y'all don't borrow a lot of money, is the story here, you don't, we traditionally have not borrowed a lot of money. We pay gold, practice, a lot of stuff, a lot of projects in this county. And those of you that been on the board a long time, y'all know, we ain't borrowed a whole lot, we ain't done a lot of debt sales since y'all been on the board, I know, just a few. Oak Grove and maybe one or two more for smaller stuff, like air conditions and stuff like, and roof for, uh, uh, schools, we hadn't done nothing big. We did the Sheriff's Office. When I first got here, years, like ten years ago.
Courthouse.
Courthouse.
Pursuer for the school.
Surer. Well, then that's so, now that's even further back, yeah, that stuff's starting to move out. But just remember that capacity piece as we build future budgets, as we get into the future. It's not a, it's not gonna be an issue for next year fiscal year, it's a twenty-seven, twenty-eight concept that we'll keep coming back to. As to what do we wanna do and what is, do we wanna lay claim to that money or is, cause you got a rightful claim, in my opinion, you've already fronted it.
I wish the federal government looked like this.
Amen.
Well, if I can go up there and work part-time, I could probably doze it right into place, I'm sure, so.
May I ask a question about Oak Grove?
Go ahead.
Does that include both the middle school and the high school? Is that debt?
Yes, no, well, the, the high, the orange is just a high school.
Just a high school.
Cause it was kinda the new one we did, the, the other one's in the blue bars.
Okay, okay, um, do you remember the cost of that school?
Uh, for the high school?
Mm-hmm.
Fifty-five.
Fifty, it was fifty or fifty-five, yep, yep. And the middle was like, help me here, Ms. Chairman or Michelle or twenty, oh, twenty-five or thirty?
Yeah, twenty-seven, I think.
Eight, twenty, between them numbers somewhere in there.
Okay.
Which was a gr-, which you look back on it now to build elementary class, a great deal. I bet you couldn't get one done now for sixty.
That's a great point, cause at our last NCACC meeting, um, we had a lady that just said that they, they were in the middle of building a high school and ended up costing them like seventy-five million dollars and they had to leave off the football field and the baseball field, cause they couldn't afford to build it. Thus, the, just the prices have went out outrageous.
It's terrible, yeah, cause you're dealing with con-, basically it's concrete, I mean, or cinder blocks, those expensive per square.
You bring up a good point there, because the new homes coming in here and the growth that we're having, there's gonna be a potential, potential need for, for new schools.
Well, but as I said, so, you know, um, you knew what, you and I have talked about this, if you take the county school's capacity and lay it out. Twenty-five thousand seats, running at about seventeen thousand kids right now, that's a pretty wide gap. In twenty thirty-five, they're only projected to go up to nineteen. That still leaves a lot of seats and you guys know what that means, I mean, there's seats from, let's just call it Lexington South. Everything up north or a little more pinched maybe, or east, west or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, I, that, that's important to remember because you guys are gonna be asked, as you rightfully just said, the, the growth, the growth, the growth. But the problem is, is they've got seat capacity.
Mm-hmm.
They just don't have them in the right buildings that they maybe need them to. And that could be, have to be a conversation the school system's gonna have to have amongst themselves, as painful as it may be, about what are we gonna do about empty buildings?
Move in lines?
Redistricting, yeah.
To fill the seats.
I mean, before you ask the county commissioners to build more stuff, you gotta build out what you got. Or, or use more efficiently what you got, in my opinion, before you come to us and say, we got a problem, you know?
Yeah.
So that's the big, those, there's lots of other stuff that go on in county government, I got it, but that thirty thousand foot, that's the big revenues, that's the big expenses. Tell you what I think next year might look like. Skipping through this stuff, we're gonna be done by nine thirty, y'all. So let's start on the revenue side, go to page thirteen. Left hand column is the budget where we are today, just hundred and sev-, just shot, just under a hundred and seventy-six million dollars for the general fund. Broken down in these high level categories. Intergovernmental revenue, the grants are largely DSS money, let's just call it that, and some public health stuff as well. Current property tax, you just saw the charts for that. That base sales tax, those blue parts of the sales tax graph, the bottom blue sides. And, and even forty and forty-two, I think is lumped into that, cause that's, the specialty items are forty-four and forty-six, that's why I indented them in just a little bit. Charges for service, like building, like your building permits. Um, well, no, charges for service would be more like Outen, ambulance trips. And then the licensing permits would be built into these permit fees. Interest, remember I spoke about that one earlier?
Why's that one declining so much?
I, I'll get, I'll get to that in just a second, I just want you to see the categories here, I'm, cause I, Mr. Kestrel, make sure he's never been through this before. I want him to look at me and going, what are you talking about with intergovernmental revenue, what is that? Interest earned, um, other, every other kinda revenue I can pull, you know, I just call it other, cause it's, starts to delineate at that point. And then fund balance, I left that one kinda at the bottom, cause Mr. McClure's gonna get on my case if I don't address fund balance and interest as part of this budget. And I, I agree with him on this topic. So look at the es-, what I call the estimated budget. Um, I got a little drop in the, in the, uh, in the intergovernmental revenue, why, look at the first bullet over to the side. Remember, we talked about this for now five, six years and we're gonna end at this coming budget. Lottery proceeds, the schools have been paying part of those debt bars you saw on that previous slide for years for that old, that old debt. As that stuff falls off, here's another reason why I think you're entitled to the slack as the future comes. They've been paying part of that. Remember, we decided years ago, as that debt falls off, they're probably rightfully the first ones entitled to get the slack back. And number two, you know, the lottery proceeds go back to them in Raleigh. There's a not, you know, we have to request that money to come here, other than that, it sits on a balance book down there. We've been pulling off ten percent a year, you know, we had a million and a half dollars or a million six when I started. And what we didn't wanna do is have all them debt bars get pulled down and get caught with, oh, that's their money and we, we have to a million and a half dollars pull out of the budget and that's a hole. Does that make sense? We didn't wanna get caught back into twenty twenty-nine or thirty or whatever with not recognizing that. So we all decided years ago, probably five years ago, we're gonna take ten percent off every year and eventually slowly it'll just go away. And it'll match the debt falling off. Well, we're at the last piece now, five hundred thousand, so I pulled it all out. We won't, we'll just won't take any of it. And now their lottery balances get to build up, that's another thing for y'all to remember as we talk about school projects. Now they have the opportunity to have those balances build and accumulate in Raleigh for roofs and things like that. So that's why the drop. Do I think that the federal government are gonna make more moves, I just talked with Trish about this yesterday? More, we can't even get good state estimates and you guys know why, I mean, with the news going on. There's, nobody knows what's gonna come down from the feds in terms of Medicaid spending, nobody knows. So I don't know, unfortunately, if we will know by July one. So we, we're gonna have to pull the trigger on a number and maybe have to do a quick, uh, about face if the number gets told to us as we get into fiscal year and it's not what we expect, that makes sense. And we can do that, we have to, may have to be a dealing with staff or things like that, that, in other words, you don't get enough money for, uh, public assistance funds. You may not have, need as much staff, that's just the way it has to be.
Mm-hmm.
But we'll have to play that game and see what comes down, it's the federal government's where it starts. They're the, they're the ones with the Medicaid dollars that sends them to the states. Right now, I'm just kinda, outside of that five hundred thousand, I'm just kinda keeping it flat. Property tax, four percent, you saw David was at four, so I'm moving at about the same clip. Leaving good slack between the ninety and a half I wanna budget and the reality, which you saw, current year, a hundred and two. So that, we're talking about next year, so that hundred and two obviously should grow by another three or four points. Base sales tax, I ain't moving but about a one point seven percent. I'm trying to keep it under that two percent you saw growth. Trying to keep that one relatively low, I don't wanna take as much as I have to. Gonna budget all the forty-four and forty-six on education and stuff like that, because again, I don't, those funds we're not gonna collect, we're not gonna keep. The charges, um... Mr. Chairman's asking me that question. I think, Mr. Chairman, as I went through some of the budgets, I pulled down like a little bit of fine and forfeiture dollars um, that I saw for the court system that didn't quite, didn't quite make it for last fiscal year. In other words, what we budgeted was, it brought in a little bit less, so I pulled that down slightly. Um, right now, I don't have a transfer from County Capital Reserve to Duane's budget to do the smaller capital items, like fixing HVACs and things like that. I kinda eliminated that out, I'm just gonna use county dollars because all the cash that's in that account, you're gonna see is spoken for. Down to the dollar for these big projects.
Wow.
So I think that's what's driving some of that red pull down. The licensing permits kinda offset that by twenty-eight thousand, cause I've moved it up slightly.
Is there a decrease in those numbers?
Sorry?
Uh, have you found a decrease in those numbers?
For which ones?
The fines and forfeitures.
Just slightly, just slightly, it's, I, yeah, I noticed it last year, it was a little bit below what I thought it was going to be, um, so.
Surprised it's not a whole lot more.
Yeah, I, and I, so I pulled it down, I don't wanna get greedy and keep thinking that it's gonna make it, this year will fix itself, so I pulled it down some. So the, the goal with this, remember guys, is this, on revenues, be real conservative, super conservative. If you think it's gonna be ten dollars, pull it down to five. Because if you make ten dollars, great, but on expenses, get aggressive. Make sure you got, if you think it's gonna cost ten dollars, maybe put twelve. So that the two numbers always get a little away from each other. And you always have that cushion to deal with issues like we just talked about with, with the federal government. Maybe throwing us a number that we're not accustomed to for Medicaid and we gotta make moves, that makes sense? So aggressive on one side, conservative on the other, and you kinda leave yourself room to play as the year moves on. Um, interest earned, so Mr. McClure, I am gonna try my best to build a budget. As you can see, two point six million dollars is what I budgeted this year now, we made over ten, ten, ten or eleven million dollars last year. The rates have been cut, as you guys know, you guys watch the news, they have cut them early in the summer and fall timeframe. So now we're probably on pace for an eight or nine million dollar year. I don't know if there'll be more cuts, I, as I understood, the plan was, there were going to be a couple more cuts in twenty twenty-five. I don't know, they'll watch the economy to make those moves, maybe it'll only be one, maybe there'll be none. Um, if there's none, we're gonna continue to make seven or eight million dollars, if they cut more, it's gonna drop. So I'm pulling it down to three hundred grand. I have seen this number fall to fifty grand one time before, all the way to fifty. So it's not a revenue source, again, that you want to get addicted to spending from. You would prefer, you know, Mr. McClure asked me this last spring when I built a budget, don't you think two point six? I said, well, made eleven, so I think two six is safe, but his point was well taken, I'd rather budget zero. And it'd just be extra, because I don't wanna get caught. Same thing with fund balance, six point eight million, I'm, when I got here, it was about three something. Yes, we've moved it up, we hadn't spent it, Mr. McClure, we've budgeted, remember there's a difference, budgeted and spend is different. I'm gonna pull it down, I'm gonna get it down back to four and a half and keep trying to whittle my way back down to three where I started ten years ago. So there's the big drops right there, that's two point two and two, that's four and a half million dollars of the drops. So yes, my, I am trying my best to build a base budget that actually reduces from the year before. As you can see, by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Flip over, one penny generates one point eight million dollars. When I got here ten years ago, I think it was about one point two or three. So it's moved five or six hundred thousand dollars in ten years. So where we wanna spend those funds on, we call this the base budget, by the way. As we go through the budget process with the departments, there'll be stuff that'll come up that you may see in the proposed budget from me, where I sit through department meetings and go, you know what, we gotta make a room to figure out how to fund this, it's gotta go, we gotta be, or state law change or something like that. But at this point in the year, I never know that, so this is what I call the base budget. Start with the top, the revenues, as you saw, what, uh, what I would like to do, a reduction, albeit slight, under half a percent. But here's where you wanna spend it. So base personnel, that number there includes salaries and everything but group insurance and retirement. You can see the change, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, what's it for? Well, we've added ten positions, we just did the six for DSS at the last meeting. And we've done a couple more for her, I think at the beginning of the year and one for Outen as well. We've pulled off a position in GIS, cause remember we had Linda leave and we had one that was a shell out. So we're down now to the staff that work down there. So that explains the way to six fifty-five, if you wanna know what it costs for these ten, it was six sixty, so you can see I'm dead on, dead on the money. In other words, the base budget ain't growing, even with all our salary calc's and people we're bringing in, we're washing it right back to net nothing. Group insurance, down two and a half, I've got several high cost claimants coming off the plan. We're having a great insurance year. Probably better than great. We're headed back to insurance costs that what it was three, four years ago, which is unbelievable.
Yeah.
Where my colleagues are sending out emails to listservs talking about, what am I gonna do with my insurance, my, you know, it's going up this, I ain't got that problem. I mean, I'm going down, so all it takes is a couple of high cost claimants to be on the plan to bu-, budget bust things. They are off. Um, we did get notified, I went ahead and took a stab at this, it wasn't far off when I built this thing in October, November. Uh, I figured the, the LGC with the Treasury's office would send me something saying retirement's gotta go up and they did last week. And so we, they gotta go up on law enforcement and they gotta go up on general employees. I wasn't too far off on the general employees, but the law enforcement went up another point beyond what even I thought. And I moved them up, I think, ten percent or so, you can see about a ten percent jump in that cost. But that's a mandated thing to flush the retirement system whole, because the future, basically, they, they use their little amortization schedules or whatever and they know, we gotta have X amount of money coming into this thing or people ain't gonna be able to pay, we ain't gonna be able to pay the retirements.
I mean, that's almost a million bucks, so that's from now on, right?
Yes, sir. Well, next year could be up, they could, they could send me a notification, say you gotta go up a little bit more. I mean, several years ago, we used to hold it, you could, you could pretty much count on it not moving too much. And then when Dale got in, I think he kinda recognized, hey, this thing ain't as solvent as I'd like it to be. Uh, sorry, these counties and cities are gonna have to give me some more funds out of this stuff to make this happen. I mean, it's, you know, reality where we are. I wish they'd had a way to, I wish they'd, go back to seeing it coming, I wish somebody saw it coming and made a plan to make it a little bit more, uh, level. Lot, not such big increases, but it didn't happen that way, it kinda landed in Dale's lap. Uh, and there's the cola.
So if they come out and say, we need two million bucks, we gotta cough up two million.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I think it's time, uh, the public needs to take a good look at this, because this is possibly getting out of hand.
The middle, the middle section there is the cola, so you can see, you don't have a, uh, the cola's built into that number on the left hand side of the adopted budget. But there's what the cola costs to run it at, I haven't moved it, five hundred and four percent, which in the county averages out to about five point one. Cause you remember how we do those raises, you, the, the less you make, the bigger percentage you get, they're a little bit staggered due to that five hundred dollars. We do it a little bit different than other places. So once you do that, the whole personnel budget, Mr. Chairman, moves about two percent points, because you're getting such the benefit off the insurance. Go down in the bottom side. Um, so with our operating expenses, and I'm starting with that top line that says operating there, what I've got is a reduction, I've got county contingency. You remember back last year, we talked about those debt bars and like, hey, if we're gonna sell some debt for, back then, we were looking at the detention center being possibly the ninety-five million dollar option. We had funds put in contingency, knowing that we could go into that during the year for one time, but it allowed us the ability to equal what the top end of those bars need to be to get that done. And we knew that if we were gonna do that option, then one day we would take it out of county contingency and put it in debt and our budget doesn't change. Well, we, now we know a little bit better, or we're getting a little closer to a plan that the jail committee might can, uh, massage or make better or whatever. And getting a little closer on the cost, a little more refined, we don't need the one point eight million, so I removed it. But I did put four hundred in there that gets to that top. But I did put four hundred in there that gets to that top, remember that top debt service bar from the, from the previous slide? The one that's at the very, that goes to the highest. That four hundred allows us the ability to be at that number. Already in our budget now. Yes, I could pull it out and there's four hundred, but if you go spend it on something else, then I, when we do the jail option, I got to come up with that four hundred again. See what I'm saying? So I'm putting it in county contingency. It can be used, as Mr. Elliott said, one-time stuff next year. Because we're not going to need it for debt next year. We will need it for the following year. So you see what I'm doing? I'm getting ready for the potential, a potential debt sale for the jail. Maybe. If we don't, we don't, but I'm, financially, I'm getting positioned for it. I've got some of these DSS expenses coming down to match some of that intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue loss. Um, we had some one-time stuff in the budget, uh, some sheriff's office equipment, the body cams, the tasers, the night vision. I pulled that out of their budget to start the year because we've already bought them. They were one time. Remember, Thomas had some big equipment in his budget, P and R, one time. So I pulled it out starting off the year. So that's why you're seeing the big reductions there in operating. For education operating, I did add another five hundred additional, and we'll talk about those supplements in just a little while, um, to maybe get ready for a plan for one of those options. I've got several options you can see, but there's an additional dollars to get that ready. Uh, we had debt falling off. Six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, that's taught, that gets back to, you know, allowing them to have some of their lottery money back, et cetera. But I've got one million in to a net result of that four hundred thousand dollars I spoke of. One million additional to get the, ready for the jail borrowing. And that's based on Ryan doing me a, a debt sale as of today, which will change if we try to do it next, next, next winter. So that's how you're getting that four hundred I'm putting away in contingency, the net result of those two numbers. That, that number's in the red again. Thomas pulled down. I got, I got enough in there to do ambulances and sheriff's cars. Those are what I call standard things, base things. We're always going to replace them. We're going to try to replace the stuff that's over a hundred and twenty thousand miles or whatever, and same thing without them. So you don't want to not have them in the base because then you get caught with, well, we got to, we got to replace them. Where's the money coming from? So I kind of include that in, but Thomas's stuff was one time. He needed that equipment. Didn't, last year, got it, it's over. So all that matches, if I were able to pull all that off, there's your balanced budget with actually a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction. But that's what would be included in what I call the base budget. Now, that doesn't get into any more positions. None of that. You know, you see, you don't see me listing any more positions or anything else changing at that point. And if, I don't know if y'all need a break or not. I mean, we've only been going thirty minutes and I'm already at the big projects. We're going to be done by thirty minutes here probably. We'll get a little talk, conversation on this sports complex, uh, issue because I want to, I got it singled out. So that, that gets the general fund taken care of. And that's kind of how the cash moves around in the general fund. Yes, there will be some things come out of the budget meetings that I will hear that will, will perk my attention and go, ah, may have to help deal with that issue. Um, I heard some yesterday with Trish, that she had some valid, she actually had some valid points about some things inside her budget that we probably need to take a look at. I don't know that I can do them all, but we need to take a look at some of them. But that gets us to our capital plan. And remember, all the cash from the beginning part of this presentation, remember the sixteen, remember the five and a half? That's what's funneling into here to help do these. If you flip over to page sixteen. You all have seen this. I just, I just filled it up some and I do the colors for a reason to help remember things. So walk with me through this so you can see this, the, the cash and what's everything else going on. Top, top side is the cash, bottom side is the project. Let's, let's do top side first. Fiscal year and projects. Current available, just under eighty-one and a half million. I got it circled in that red box there. Eighty-one and a half million under that thing. It says county dollars. Just stay with the county dollars for just a second. In twenty-five, to make this plan go, and you'll, you see, we'll go through the plan part in a minute. Tim needs to transfer twenty-two point eight from that, over collections on them previous slides into this plan. Now, he's almost to the end of twenty twenty-five, right? We're going to be there in the next two or three months. So let's call that one off the list. You got two more rounds of it. In twenty-six and twenty-seven, he needs to do essentially the same amount to get to a magic number of just under a hundred and fifty million dollars. He's got to transfer sixty-eight million dollars for the next, that's all together, twenty-two, three years in a row. There are other revenue sources that can help fund this plan is some of that forty and forty-two sales tax I spoke of where you got the slack that goes to school capital. Remember the statutes, thirty percent on one, sixty percent on the other. There could be some of that slack moved over to here. You got debt, which will be for the jail piece, and I'll go to, I'll go over, you'll see the same number at the bottom in just a second. And then we got grants and other revenue, which is essentially for the landfill and the airport. The airport's got big state grants that are available to them for hangars and for their FBO station, et cetera. That's what that is. So that is going to be money in, money out. And then we got a million and a half already budgeted. Look at the bottom side. Look at the colored pink section there. So you'll see the numbers all match. So there's the sportsplex at the sixty-five million. And we'll, we'll dive into that one a little deeper in just a second. So there's the sixty-five. You see no other sources of revenue helping to cover that, just county cash. The detention center expansion, sixty-seven point five total with part of it in cash. And look with your eyes, it matches the debt number over to the right. So there will be a borrowing for that one, and that's a great project to borrow on because when you borrow, you got to put up collateral. And that can be the collateral, the building itself, the facility. The admin building for DCS, two million dollars is kind of what we said we would take a look at when Brian comes back with the plan, you know, after bids. We've already put up five, we already put up a million and a half, so we only got to put up five hundred more. That's what you, this column that says county cash, just follow along with that one. That's your main column right there. What do I got to come up with in cash out of our money? Possible school renovations or education renovations, thirty-three and a half, split up between the two sources. Just under thirty in cash, and then from those sales tax proceeds where you're getting some, some slack. And that's possible. You see the word possible? I'd like to have a committee from, from you guys, or use the facilities committee. Might be the way we could do about it because I think that's essentially the same committee as the high, as the school committee, basically. Um, and work with the, each four of them with representatives to work through plans, their capital plans or facility plans on how to spend those funds. Come up with a plan. But I've got a dollar amount set aside because I don't know that it'll be divided twenty-five, 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 twenty-one. And maybe it's, we all know Thomasville needs some TLC, high school. They've, they're going to, they're going to apply for the DPI grant again, as I understand it from Dr. Williams. Um, they think they know what's been inhibiting them from getting it. And you remember the match on that was about ten or so million because it's an eighty, twenty grant. So if you build a, built a high school at a hundred million dollars, you got to come up with twenty percent, which would be twenty million dollars. Like it was a little lower than that, but my point is that could be, come out of these funds. Possible, possible is the key word, high rock, late dredging. The chairman and I sat through some conversations back before Christmas with the consultant firm. You guys remember, we were part of that study. They have yet, I asked them the other day, when are we going to get back together? You know, they got options, they just ain't got numbers on them yet. Uh, they're not going to dredge the whole lake. They just got options for doing pieces of it that are really bad parts. Let's call it that. I put in a placeholder number for right now because I don't know of ten million. And then you can see, I didn't color in orange the airport renovations in the landfill because that's money in, money out. You see the numbers over there and to the right, the same amounts. But this is the entire plan. Two hundred and thirty-five million dollar plan for five-year spending. That's incredible for a county of this size, yes.
It says the, uh, possible school renovations. Does that build the schools?
No, just, it would, it couldn't do it because it would take all the money. It wouldn't even have enough to do that. It's just.
We've been figuring with this education thing now for three years. And trying to get the buildings built, and we haven't done much, if we've done anything at all. And we're just now going to put thirty-three for, for two schools.
No, it don't have to be for two schools. It can be.
We got two schools to build.
I don't know about two schools to build. I hadn't, hadn't heard anybody say we need to build anything.
We discussed and we said in this, in this business that instead of building on the Lexington High School, that we would provide every, um, benefit on a renovate, renovation that we were on the rebuilding. And, and we're not, we're not following through with that. I just can't see because we had, the last time we looked is about fifty-four million dollars.
No, that's always been kind of that number there out of the cash. Now, you could go back to the borrowing and as debt falls off, borrow more money and couple it with that thirty-three and now you're at eighty or ninety. But you wouldn't, you couldn't build a new school out of that because it would basically take all the money.
I mean, seventy-five million bucks for a new school.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, so you're going to have to renovate schools. And again, it goes back to, I mean, I've talked to these superintendents up here. They're not at capacity either. So nobody's at capacity at certain schools.
At Walburg.
At certain schools, right. They may be at capacity, but the system's got seats. So what we've done up here at Lexington Mill School is helped renovate, you know, stuff that needs to be, that's old, that needs to be fixed. And maybe ADA issues and things like that. I think that'll be very similar to the high school piece. But Thomasville High School is the, is the next one probably that needs to come up because they've shot and shot for the grants and can't seem to get through, break through the other side. And we've all been over there and heard the stories and the piping issues and things like that. I mean, I think they probably be the next ones up. But we need to figure out a way to divide this, this thirty-three, but it doesn't have to be the end, Mr. Chairman. They don't, we don't have, this doesn't, this doesn't, this only looks at this five-year snapshot.
I just did on paper.
There could be more money come into this thing as time goes on.
What I don't want to see us do is we keep relying on this grant. And now we've talked about this for three years on renovation for those two cities. We hadn't done it and, and we're not going to do it this year.
No, we are. That's what I'm saying. I want to come out of the summer with a group. Probably the facilities committee be, I'd be the group I would recommend and do a group, a piece from the four of them. You know, the county schools, Lexington, Thomasville and the college. And get together and look at their FCAs and walk through them and come out of that with a plan on how to divide this. This, at least this first part of this money up. This will get them through the next three or four years of working nice. And then we'll talk about some more as we get past, remember, this is the five-year snapshot. There'll be five more coming as time moves on.
I, I realize that, um, that a couple of the commissioners have mentioned that, you know, Walburg is at capacity. Um, I would, I would challenge the entire board to, to sit back and, and watch. We're, we're really not sure what's going to happen in the next four years with the education department, the federal funding that could switch to the state. We might be in a totally different situation to where the state could get some money that we could use, uh, some of our folks to, to barter for and maybe even, um, get some of these things done in a quicker fashion. So I would, I would just, we're in uncertain times right now and some of these questions could be answered without us, you know, necessarily putting our citizens at risk for, you know, higher taxes. So I would just kind of maybe continue to talk with our folks up in Raleigh and see what they're hearing.
Isn't Walburg Elementary over like a hundred percent capacity? I think.
It's like a hundred and ten percent.
Hundred and ten percent.
Hundred and ten, right.
Uh, capacity, but I'm, I'm sure it's over capacity until they build the modular units outside. I mean, it can't be a hundred and ten percent of, I guess it's above original capacity. Because if it wasn't, out of every hundred kids, there'd be ten of them standing outside if it was above capacity, you know? So they've got to be somewhere inside the school. Now, I, am I right, Chris, in saying that? So now, again, I don't know why, to me personally, why they put modular units there. If that had been me originally, I'd have built brick and mortar and, um, then, you know, the infrastructure would be there. So, uh, now I don't know if the core, the cafeteria is big enough for a hundred and ten percent. I'd say it probably is because they feed them every day. Um, so again, that may be something if the school system wants to look at it, we do brick and mortar, uh, and, and get those modular units out, you know? Um, and add another wing on, you know? So that's just me looking at it. I'm, I'm not in favor of modular units, you know? Never have been.
I'm just, I'm just saying they need assistance and they, they need it, they need it soon.
Well, like I said.
They're exploding up there in the county.
They're in, they're in, they're under roof, you know? So I mean, the capacity's there, just the school wasn't built for that many people.
Well, and it's continued to grow up there.
The, the brick and mortar, you know? Uh, now I think you're really going to see a lot more growth probably come into municipalities because we decreased the lot sizes, uh, or increased the lot sizes in the county. So we knew when we talked about that, that that was going to probably push them to build in the cities and that's what it's doing. So, um, I think the city of Lexington's got maybe what, thirteen hundred houses?
Yeah.
Under, under earth moving right now. So you're probably going to start seeing the growth come into the municipalities. That's just my take on it from this point. Right, so, but again, I agree. If that's what the school system wants to spend their money on is, is, uh, Walburg, then, you know, we'll try to go up there.
And if I remember right, Walburg's got a land lock-in issue going on, um.
It could be. It's got a ball field there. And that's what we keep saying. Maybe the ball field has to go somewhere else and you add on to the school there. Now, I get it. I, I don't know who owns the ball field. I don't know if this is school's property or what, but, you know, the ball field might have to go down the road, you know, just a little further. I mean, what's more important, the school or the ball field, you know, and we'll, we'll have to address that, but that's just my thinking.
I've worked in a modular unit.
Same.
I almost quit teaching school. It was terrible.
Yeah, I just, I, it ain't never been my favorite and the, the last addition we done, I tried to get them to do brick and mortar and they insisted on. On doing modulars.
Sam was against it, you know?
We did, we did Walter up there in Ledford with a hundred and ten that you're talking about. We were, we were moving, um, classrooms in the gym. We had a classroom going in the gym and they switched from one classroom to the other classroom inside the gym. So that means they had to carry all that stuff at the same time. Now, we went in there and saw that.
So, and let me.
Davidson or Davidson. There's no place to go.
Let me mention this. You, you say Walburg's land lock? If you move, if you move the modulars there or not, because the modular's got to be sitting on a piece of land.
That's just what I understood.
Right, but if there's modulars there, you move them and build brick and mortar, you got room. So you don't even have to move the ball field. I've heard that too, but I just thought in my mind, if you got modulars sitting there, move them out the way and put brick and mortar, so.
The thing about is, if you do that, you increase the amount that you're going to have to, um, spend on the possible school renovations. Because we've got to build two city schools and now you're talking about moving all of the modulars into stuff that's on the roof. You just don't have that money.
I don't think, we talked about building two middle schools, I mean, two Lexington schools. Lexington High School is going.
Unless they get the DPI grant.
Right, right.
Then they can take the money and match that and get it done. But if they can't, the, the backup plan is major renovation.
A major renovation.
Mr. Manager, what, what's the percentage of that lottery funding? We cut that to zero that because the debt services has moved out. You've done a tremendous job planning on the ten percent decrease every year. Now, we're giving that money back so that the school systems can build that funding up. Do you know what that is per year? What they're looking at?
Um.
Forty percent, that's what we got.
Tim, can you go check that and see if you find it? I don't want, I don't want to quote off the top of my head.
Okay.
Um, and it'll be hard to know what we've cut in terms of off of our books will add to theirs, um, continue to grow.
And that's a good, that's a good portion for that percentage of money to go to, um, depending on what it is.
How, how would that really, I mean, I understand how, how it would be controlled, but how would that really change anything? Because you're just taking money we got and giving it to them so the dollar amounts are going to be the same? Is it going to remain correct or not?
Um, it would, it would give them the ability to go to that pot of money and, and the eligible expenses for that. You know, both boards have to approve that, the school board and you guys. Um, so if they found something inside a renovation project that was eligible expense, they could go, they could go take it from that money.
Like the dollar amount's the same.
Yeah, what we're paying.
It's about which way they were touching.
Yeah, except I think there's some, there's some weird things with theirs, with the way the state, see, the state gives them those funds. So how they accrue and the business behind that, I don't pretend to know. Um, because it's all based on collections of people buying lottery tickets and all that stuff. So it may change a little bit, um, but it essentially gives them a bigger pot to go at. But remember, those things are, they have a, they have a prescribed thing you can spend for. You can't just do whatever you want to do.
Talking about the stand, uh, the state and what they've done on that is when they started, we got a hundred percent. Then it went to forty percent. And there was a, um, bylaw in there or law in there, whichever you want to say, that it had to go to the school. And they eliminated that. So now it's up to the schools, I mean, the state as to what, how much money they send.
There have been changes, yeah.
They're not.
That are not always beneficial to the county. That are not always beneficial to the county, um.
And now, you know, that was a, uh, that was a pre-plan for us, I'm concerned. They can, if they get out of jam, they can take that money. And, um.
And they will.
Yeah. Yeah, they've never been real good about managing their own stuff.
So, that's, but this is the plan in one shot. And I want you to remember the pink. I call it pink. I don't know if it's tan or whatever. Two hundred and thirty-five million dollar total five-year plan with a hundred and fifty needed in cash. For round numbers, just remember that one fifty. If you wanna flip over, let's break this down. That's the high level. Look, let's break it down just a little bit.
Now, where's the sixty-five million coming from, you just count it?
All in, all in cash, all out of that hundred and fifty million in cash. And it's on this list here. So, this list here, sorry if you, I did, I did neglect one thing. From the previous slide, you saw a thing that said preliminary twenty-twenty-five, twenty-thirty CIP, fourteen million dollars. That's all the other stuff. We were probably saying, what is that? When you flip over to this page here, this is the other stuff.
Yeah, just a, just a note, the sportsplex has not been on there for our five-year plan, except for this year. We have not allowed anything for that.
Right.
So, now we're gonna take sixty-five million dollars out of our cash money. And all of these other plans down here that we've got, we're, we're shorted on, Lou.
No, the only thing we shorted was we traded the Salisbury Sewer Project for that. Um, you didn't short any of the other numbers. They hadn't moved.
We still spending sixty-five million dollars.
Well, that's correct. You would be spending sixty-five.
And your admin building, you were gonna replace that, now you're gonna renovate it.
No, I don't think the board ever agreed to replace it, no.
That's what we talked about. We talked about several times. They was talking about putting, uh.
No, they wanted a twenty-five million dollar facility. I think this board said no.
Said no on that facility. Twenty-five to thirty million dollars is what they thought the dollars are gonna end up being.
So, let me break this, let me break, we're breaking this, breaking this cash total concept down just a little bit. So, the white part at the top, I didn't put a subtotal, but that's your fourteen. Now, look with your eyes on the, some of those projects. We've got the public defender, uh, issue that we may have to deal with over at the courthouse or over at the bank.
I have a question before you go any further on that. Is that something that all counties have and is, is it required?
Once they, it'll be required once they fund the personnel piece of it. We gotta require, we gotta fund the space.
Oh, so it is required?
Right. It has to be like equal to the amount of DA space.
And, and all counties will be doing that?
That I don't know. Um, I think a lot of them have it, but the initiative coming out of what they wanna do, putting a budget bill for October, is include us in one. Now, whether it gets passed, I don't know.
I would like to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, um, I, I'd like to speak, I know that, uh, Virginia Fox is planning on doing hers in Rockingham. And they're, they're doing that budgeting now. So, I think it might be up to the representative where they want to house at. I'm not, I'm unsure of that, but I, I did wanna tell you that.
Yeah, and I, I, I just wondered because Sam was in Raleigh yesterday.
Right.
And he was approached, uh, by some of the lawyers about making sure that.
I mean, I've never got, I've never got the warm and fuzzy that this is all gonna go all the way.
Okay.
Um.
I, I kinda hope it don't, and that's just me, okay?
Well, I, I, I think that's what we're thinking, but, uh.
And I wish you'd talked to Sam about it, and I'll try to call him.
And that's the reason I wanted to talk about whether it's required.
It will, like I said, if it.
Plan for space, cause you don't know how many they're gonna require us to have if they actually turn around and require us to have it.
Okay.
They gave.
Even plan for that. And so, what you're doing is you're putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
And, and trying to determine, like, for example, the bank affair we were talking about, that's, that might be, heck, that place probably way too big for what they're gonna require us. And it could meet our needs in so many other different directions.
Right, amen.
And maybe I just don't know enough about this, okay?
Well, and I don't.
But, but to me, this is just us, Raleigh making us supply public defenders.
It's another social approach. That's exactly what it is.
We'll have to do the space, right, right.
We have to do the space, but they're pushing public, they're gonna hire private sector lawyers.
Right.
And make them.
And, and they're gonna make them, uh.
So, that's the reason I wanted to bring it up, so I didn't ask a question.
So, if this board don't agree with it, we maybe ought to do a resolution.
Yeah, the sin, the sin down there to our delis too.
The sin says we don't support it.
Yeah.
Now, again, I, I'm sure.
I missed the conversation. What was that that you mentioned?
This first one, the public defender office, putting it in the budget for, for us building a space for it, or having a space for it.
Okay.
Not necessarily building it, but providing.
Okay.
So, that's, that's something we need to take care of pretty soon.
Yeah, we put that on the list, cause we need to get to them before they start deliberating about the state budget.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it is, it is.
This summer's when they're gonna, you know, they'll get up there and start talking about it, among other things.
So, you know, it's early, it's early, early in their session. So, you know, I don't know how far it's gonna be down the road.
A lot of millions of dollars that we got from the state, um, by virtue of our representatives. Do you know what the number was? How many millions we had?
Not in total. Most of it was earmarked for sewer and the airport.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to know that.
Jason, add it all.
I think it was about twenty-five million or something, maybe?
Sounds about right. It's more than that, cause they gave us.
Oh, yes, I know that. I talked to Fox and, and he said, and Jarvis, they said there wouldn't be no money coming.
No, there's not gonna be, I think it's gonna be a lot more limited going forward.
So, we're not gonna have the millions of dollars coming.
And that wa- that was all COVID money they was giving away anyway.
Uh, uh, no.
The feds gave them a bunch of money and they just spread it all out to different counties.
Tim, see if you can add up everything they've gave us in the last, cause all, basically all of it was sewer and airport. Cause the airport was fifteen and then sewer was. Ten point eight, I think. No, well, then we just got another twenty-some round that's going, that goes to, like, Thomasville. I mean, it's probably fifty million in total. But it's all dedicated to those two things.
For some reason, I didn't think it was that much, but it may have been, they come in in chunks, so.
I won't walk down every one of these projects, but just take your eyes and you can see how they move through the five-year spread there. You've got server replacements, roof replacements, um, window replacements, like at Cecil School. The elevator, what's left of the elevators, we are, you know, we're about finished with these out here. Um, you got some more EMS bases in the out years, if we ever get in that place. Uh, you've got what's, you know, we need to get done with Silver Valley, that's coming up in twenty-five. The old Daymark Building, we've got an amount in there to kinda get it renovated. Uh, and then you got the radios and some console replacement stuff. The radios are way out at the end of the plan. Go back down to the pink section now. So, that's that white section matches from the previous slide, the fourteen million dollars, what I call everything else. The pink on this matches the pink from the previous slide. So that you can see how the, so this is just the cash. This is just that hundred and fifty million dollars of cash that we need to spread. And here's how it could spread. If you choose to do these pink, these projects in this pink. And I got the sportsplex highlighted for a reason. I'll, we're gonna get into that one a little deeper. But if you appropriate these amounts, and the only one we had to pull off the list from what we had before was the Salisbury Sewer Project. It came off and in its place was the, the sports complex. The only other project I had to quote-unquote augment was this possible school renovation amount. When I say augment, I didn't change the dollar amount total, I just spread it different. Did it over two years instead of one because I couldn't, if you look down at the bottom, the green and the, the gray rows. What you're seeing is that eighty-one million dollars worth of cash that we started with, what we call current available. If you appropriate all this stuff in this column twenty-five, it will reduce that dollar amount, right? You'll take it down to sixty-eight, but then Tim turns around and puts twenty-two point eight back on top of it, right? And then you get to a new amount. And then you deduct everything in column twenty-six and you get to another total. And then Tim comes and puts another twenty-six. So, that's how this thing flows. The gray part at the bottom is the flow. So, you can see how you, you, you don't have enough money in twenty-six to get all that done. Hence the reason why the school project piece had to be busted into two separate years. But it's, if you take your eyes and go all the way to the right, by the end of the five-year plan, all that cash is spent. It goes to hash. So, you are done with the, the whole hundred and fifty million dollars worth of cash going on a two hundred and thirty-five million dollar capital plan. So, that gives you basically the plan. So, now you, now you know cash-wise, you do got some variables there though. Tim's gotta be able to put up the twenty-two point eight three more times to make this thing what I call fully funded, right? And he's about to do the twenty-two point eight probably again in, um, May of this year. So, we're only two months out for that one. So, then he's down to the last two. If he can accomplish that two more times, which I don't, based on the revenue numbers we're looking at, I don't know why we can't, then this plan can be, this can be done. Adam's over here giving me financial advice, so I, I don't know why, but as if I'm.
Casey, we got the, the number there on that state funding. It's fifty-seven, uh, million, six hundred seventy-five thousand.
Well, I was close. I said fifty. Mr. Chairman, did you hear that?
For what?
Yeah.
That's the state funding that you asked about. It's fifty-seven point six million, roughly, almost fifty-seven point seven.
Yeah, yeah, and you've gotta break down a load.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, for the five million for the sewer capacity that we purchased from Lexington, another, um.
Jason, just put it in an email and send it to everybody.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the Thomasville.
So, that gets us to, I highlighted the sportsplex for a reason because I knew that was gonna be the conversation piece of the stuff in the pink. If y'all wanna take a break, we can, cause then we can dial in on that project.
Let's take a break.
Yeah.
Ten-minute break.
I'm trying to move legs.
Yes.
About time I started.
The thing I wanted to bring up, somebody just brought it to my attention too, that I don't know how the board feels about a resolution, um, opposing the new vehicle, uh, registration tax that they're proposing in Raleigh.
Amen.
A la, um, resolution in opposition of increasing it.
There's another, there's another one that goes along with it too, and I don't remember what it was, but it was...
Was that the emissions?
Emissions, emissions.
I'm with it, amen.
It was fifteen, fifteen dollars.
That's terrible.
And the new emissions rules?
It's emissions and vehicle registration. They're gonna like double it. It's going from like thirty bucks to seventy or something.
That's terrible.
If they could, if they could take all the money that they charge for that and give it to the schools, then that'd be all right.
Yeah.
That'd be like the lottery money. We'll wind up getting them.
No, I'd say don't take it in the first place and, uh...
Amen.
Right. So the board's in full agreement to do that, correct?
Yes, sir, amen.
Yeah, trying to get that. I don't know how fast you can get a resolution together, but I know they're down talking now. Okay, Casey, what page, um...
I'm on...
Nineteen.
Well, let me go back to this one. So we s- we saw the capital projects, the white parts, let's just call them county project. Well, they're all county projects, but the pink ones kinda match up to the big ones on the previous slide. Now we're going to zero in on the Sportsplex. You go to nineteen. And so I got a handful of slides here about cost, construction and operating. And then I got Thomas here, if we wanna talk through this anymore, how you wanna do this, but, I mean, obviously there's the master plan. You guys saw that, uh, to the left there. I know it's smaller, but that's kinda the, the ball fields with the, the middle section there, the quad area for the, uh, the water park piece, the multi-purpose building at fifty thousand square foot. But you got the soccer fields and the baseball fields, um, pickleball courts, tennis courts, a pavilion, another indoor, uh, swimming, swimming area out to the right there. You've got the RV park and the disc golf with a, uh, cross-country track around the, the premises. Um, sixty-five million timeline. I mean, as aggressive as it sounds, if this were to be approved by this board and wanna go forward, I mean, I would assume getting started this summer would be a likely proposition, trying to get finished with all these phases in this picture by spring or summer of twenty twenty-eight. The phasing piece of it, twenty twenty-five, this is what you're staring at in terms of the design, site work, degrading, surveying for that. Um, in terms of whatever you wanna call it, cash flow, if you flip over to the next page, see the larger amounts in twenty-six and twenty-seven broken out, itemized by pieces. Um, with some of them having in parentheses kinda the, the timeline for getting those things done. And it would be much like you would expect any project of this size. Twenty-five, moving earth, designing. Twenty-six, even more design and getting some of the big stuff done, and then twenty-seven, the more of a touch-up stuff to the fields. If you flip to the next, that all adds up to sixty-five. If you flip over to...
Say something before we get started.
I'm not probably gonna support Sportsplex. Reason I'm not is I got some reasons to come and listen. Um, that's just been brought up this year. We've had a five-year plan. I went back through some of the, um, things that we have wanted to do on the five-year plan on pre- on prior budgets. And this was none, none of them. On two thousand thirteen, we talked about our Sportsplex, and there was a survey that was done. It said that if you put the Sportsplex on there, it would fail. The bond would fail. We, it, it got to the point where we had no private investment. None even was even tried, to my knowledge. None at all. And if you look at a lot of these places, the county don't put a whole dollars in it. But there wasn't. We didn't look at any other property. We took one piece of property, pretty much, and we didn't look anyplace else for, uh, anything else. And the survey we kinda done, or what, what the schools usually do, is they go and pick out three or four different sites, and then they bring it to the Board of Commissioners to look at. And we didn't do that. We didn't do that at all. We've already looked here what the detention center's gonna cost. Somewhere seventy-eight million dollars. We've had walk-throughs on the schools, I know, two times, maybe three, at Yount Hat, Lexington, and once at Thomasville. And we even made a list of all the, um, needs that were immediate needs with Lexington, and we haven't done all of those. I just don't think that we've done much planning on this, and I think that sixty-five million dollars, if we go on the things that were, um, available for us or that was planned for us, on last year's budget, it would go a long way toward solving most of that. And you've got a whole list of, of, of stuff down here on proposed renovations, so far as roof- roofing and, uh, everything else that we've got to do on schools. The other thing, and it was brought to my attention the other day when I didn't make the meeting, I supposed to make the transportation meeting. We cut transportation in this county for the seniors and for people going out of county and for people doing other things. And it would've, it would've taken about a hundred thousand dollars for us to have put that into plan, to not put service to, uh, to the, to the behind. And that's what we done. And we're gonna like, look at, again, this year, and they get, we had four hundred thousand. Last year we got, and this year we got three hundred thousand. Are we in the point where we can say we're gonna make up the difference to where our seniors and some of the senior people we got are not gonna have to fend for their own transportation? We, we don't have any wiggle room to do this. We take sixteen, sixty-five million dollars that was not even planned for, and we take it in cash money. I just don't think that's a prudent idea. And, and those were my reasons for not supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey, I'm sorry. I was taking care of business while ago, so I don't know where you at. You can follow through, or if anybody, any other commissioner...
This is the operating side.
Yeah, he started with that sixty-five million. He didn't, we didn't jump to a place.
I didn't say we jumped in. I said, I, I was taking care of some business on my phone. I didn't realize...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't realize where he was at.
You see the three phase-in pieces for getting the construction done. This is the operating piece, based on, remember when Brian was here? He spoke of the similar type facilities in South Carolina, I think was one, where, you know, they kinda went conservative and said, this is how many people attended this per year. Probably gonna be excess of that around here, but pulled it back some. So I think Commissioner Watford wanted to see it by the different pieces. Well, that's what you've got here. You've got the salary and benefits of the personnel, the rest of it, operating your contracts for all your lawn care, et cetera, by the different, what we'll call cost centers. The park, the athletic fields, the aquatic center and the RV park, and then the total. So you're, if these numbers, if Thomas has provided me with these on the expense side, and look at the bottom, you see the amount of FTEs that is. It ends up being thirty-two FTEs because most of it's part-time labor. Your lifeguards and all that kinda sto- uh, um, this right here excludes contract for pool lifeguard, sorry. So there'll be more staff than that thirty-two, 'cause you're gonna have contract lifeguards. But you got the part-time people that work for P and R, and then the four full-time staff. That runs you the million six. The revenue based off that is coming from Brian's, where I've circled it there in red, similar type facilities. And you can see the park and the athletic fields are not the ones that generate the funds. It's the aquatic center. RV park slightly, but in theory, at two million collections and a million six expense, expenses, this ends up ma- ends up being a four hundred thousand dollar proposition that you end up making. And that's, again, basing largely off what Brian had given us from Providence Partners. You know, in the government business, I mean, we're looking to kinda break even at best, definitely not at worst. I don't wanna put four hundred thousand dollars into it, but if it's even zero, it's a government venture, so to speak, more or less. But if these numbers are even close, uh, we've got, we've got the ability there to not, not go in a hole.
Ms. Watford has a question for Thomas, and I'd rather go ahead and get it out the way, 'cause it may, um... Thomas, front and center, please.
Just on this contract, um, lifeguard piece, Thomas, you know, um, when, could we, uh, if we had this park, could we hire, uh, students from our high schools, you know, high school students? Or students that were at least over sixteen, sixteen or over? Could they be hired? And, and then... Could they be hired, and, and then we have another benefit of giving them an opportunity to have a summer job, uh, during the summertime? Is that something that could be done, or is that legal issues there or problems with that?
No, ma'am, we've done it both ways, it was just, to be honest with you, with, uh, all my years at Guilford County, it was just cheaper to do, use the contracted services
Isn't.
than it is to do it in-house, yourself, your own lifeguards. But we ran them for years over there with our own in-house lifeguards, and then we also did the contract labor as well.
Okay.
So, it, it just depends on whichever way you choose to do it when we do open it up.
And that would be a nice thing to, to offer our citizens, you know?
Yeah, she brings up a good point, made me think about the field, um, the help on the fields and...
And, and that's what most of them thirty-two employees were looking at, is mostly that's gonna be, a lot of that is concession stand workers. And that's what we're hoping to do, is be able to get a lot of high school people to be able to work these jobs.
But that, that's on your part-time, right?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh. Some of them will be ground maintenance workers and people like that, but majority of that, thirty-two, is people working in concession stands and cashiers.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
So, only four full-time employees?
Yes, sir.
Um, okay.
Can I say something that I meant to say on that one?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I've never seen Thomas do anything in this county that wasn't first-class. And if you look at the plans that he's got laid out here, there's nothing at all wrong with the plan. I mean, it's, it's done right and it's laid out well, so it's not, it's not what he's doing and what he's proposed that, that I'm, um, hesitant about. It's the fact that we have to pull sixty-five million dollars on an unplanned event. Thank you, Thomas, I appreciate what you do.
All right, Casey, go ahead.
I, I think from here, it's up to you all, how do you wanna proceed? I mean, do we want to, at the next meeting, we can set a project ordinance for the sixty-five million? You saw the cash flows, we could take it out and go ahead and appropriate it and make a project ordinance and begin this first phase of bidding to the first, you saw there twenty twenty-five was, I don't know, two and a half million dollars, was it? Yeah, two-point-eight. What that would be is it would be coming to you in the form of bids and things like that to be moving forward. Um, the pace is what I'm curious about from the board's perspective, how fast you wanna try to go for this, cuz it's, you know, it's gonna get warm weather. It's probably a good time actually to start these kinds of things.
I, I've got actually a quick question, um, for projects as, as large as this, and with the, the impact that it can have on the county, is it customary to sort of have a, an open public session for citizens to come?
Oh, yeah, we can do that Monday night.
Monday night?
Monday night, yeah.
Okay.
This is just a discussion for the boards.
Just wanted to make sure.
Right, and we're gonna have open meeting Monday night, for sure.
What you could do Monday night is set the project ordinance, which is essentially setting the budget.
Gotcha.
And then, once that's in motion, that's approval by the board to do the project, or it gets voted down, it doesn't go forward. And then, what I would expect thereafter, soon, I'll have to coordinate with Thomas and Brian, is pieces of that phase one start coming to the board in the form of various agreements, right? We may sub out a variety of that stuff, um, but it'll be coming to this board in terms of cost and going, then you're scrutinizing by contract, does that make sense? Um, and we just whittle our way through it. But again, timing-wise out in the world, warm weather is about to approach, it's a, kind of a good time of the year.
So, Chris, we've heard Fred, so I'm gonna start with you, and you can put your four cents in.
Thomas, could you come up here for a second?
Do I get four cents instead?
Yeah, you don't have five.
So, a couple of questions, um, I missed the meeting when y'all first covered this. The, uh, the aquatic facility, um, I haven't heard anything about basketball courts or volleyball or anything like that, or i- is that being provided in this big?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The Sportsplex itself is fifty-two thousand square foot under roof. It is four gymnasiums under one roof.
Gotcha.
And that will be made, just like we do the West Center Street Gym, it'll be made where we can have volleyball courts on it. So, we can have four volleyball games going on at one time, four basketball games going on, twelve pickleball games going on. You'll also be able to do indoor soccer, if you choose to do indoor soccer in there as well.
Gotcha. Will the, um, county school system be able to utilize this facility?
That is up to y'all, but as me and Chris has talked about, that is absolutely the plan, is to be able to hopefully bring some of the, the sports we don't ha- offer now, because...
Championships, stuff like that, be able to be...
Yep, and, and bring, you know, middle school soccer, bring lacrosse to more schools, cuz we'll have a lot more field space.
Gotcha. Um, the...
Also, also in the aquatic center, it's an indoor facility too, with eight lap lanes, so it would be able to be used for the school teams as well for swimming.
Perfect. Um, the, the studies that you've done on sales tax revenue for these type of facilities that come in, um, I know I've done a lot of studies too on the local Sportsplexes that we have near here, and, uh, the amount of money that they bring in to that county is astronomical. Um, also, I've, I've seen in the, uh, the three closest ones that we've had, there's been an average of two motels that's been built since they put the Sportsplex there, which drives up those people that are buying gas, that are spending dollars and everything. Uh, the, the one thing that I would talk, that I would necessarily, and I, and I get what you were saying, Casey, that the, the biggest driver here is gonna be the aquatic, qualit- the aquatic facility. That's the biggest cost provider, but as a parent who drove my daughter around the United States of America playing basketball, to Indiana, to Atlanta, the, to see the amount of money spent, to see, um, the people who would've wished they had an RV, you know, parked near a facility like this, and the revenue that's being brought in, uh, one, one thing that you have to do is to, to step back and, and instead of thinking like a bureaucrat, for once, we have to think like a businessman. And, uh, that's one thing that Todd kinda pointed out that I thought was kinda crazy. Uh, the, the return on investment is not only quality of life for the citizens, but it gets to the point in time where the facility itself maintains itself with maintenance cost, the cost of the people that run it, but it also starts to provide additional funding for the counties to un- using additional departments, like education, like facilities and stuff like that, so, um, looking at that, uh, have you done any kinda economic impact studies?
Brian did one for the board when he presented it to, to you, and he used a very conservative counties of counties that had sixty-five thousand people in it, and his conservative economic impact number was about seventy million dollars a year.
Seventy million dollars of impact per year is huge. Um, and then, I, I just wanted to ask, as far as the, the other fields that we have, the, we're gonna have soccer fields and football fields?
Well, it's multipur- multipurpose fields.
Multi, okay.
Yep, and we'll have ten, ten multipurpose fields and eight softball, baseball fields.
Okay. Ten-four. Um, I think when looking at this, you know, obviously, and I've, I've seen, I've seen comments online and, and there's, there's been positive and there's been negative, uh, regarding to what, what we can pay for salaries and stuff like this. But I, I think, um, at the end of the day, you know, one thing that we're, we're gonna try to do as a board is always pay people, uh, re- really decent salaries. We're gonna try to do all that we can to have, uh, competitive salaries and the top-quality facilities. But I think as far as to the children here in, in Davison County, for those that referee, for those that, um, you know, like my daughter are involved in a little bit of everything, having something like this here that maybe will keep her home instead of having to leave, I think is something of value. And, uh, it's, it's been a dream of mine since I first started here eight years ago, and, um, I just think as a business sense that when we start seeing seventy million dollars worth of economic impact coming back into the county per year, uh, people's decisions might change, like they did on the, on the, the splash pads and everything else we put in. At first, people were against it, you're wasting money on a, on a splash pad. Well, then, when you have families that can't afford to pay for their kids to play a sport or to be involved in something like that, and the county can offer them a state-of-the-art facility, um, maybe it's worth it. So, that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shale?
You know, I did, uh, pretty much what Commissioner Elliott has just said about the park, but I'm, I, I wanna address this from a different approach. Yakon River Park, there was a time when people said, no, absolutely not. Look where the park is now. What is our participation, daily participation at Yakon River Park now?
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact number right now, I do know that it's up four times what it was a year ago.
Four times what it was a year ago.
Wow.
Our overall, when we started out, we had, uh, I think seventy-three thousand participation to all of our parks.
Mm-hmm.
And now it's, it's what?
About one-point-seven million.
About one-point-seven million, so the interest is definitely there. Uh, we can choose not to give our citizens something, or we can choose to try to give them something. I was talking to a Walbur, I mean, a Walmart executive a while back, and we were tal- I was talking about economic growth, and I, we, I, I said, we're looking for, searching for answers to try to build our economy. He says, Steve, if you wanna build your economy, capitalize on those resources that are specific to your county, cuz nobody can take it away from you then. I think we need to try to send a message to our children, potential investors that wanna bring the economy to this county, we're top-notch, and we're gonna be top-notch, we're not gonna stay down here. And ideas that one time people said no to, look at what's happened at Yakon River Park. The participation, the growth that's been, it's amazing what's been going on out there. It didn't come because people didn't have an interest. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Mr. Shale, Ms. Watford.
Thank you. Um, and, and when we first began talking about this, I was, uh, definitely, uh, um, I don't know or a no person. And I've since changed my mind, and another, uh, another thing that, that came to my mind was the concern about, uh, building something that mostly would've been done by private industry and, and governmental in, uh, doing this. And so that was a, a drawback for me, but there's, I, I came up with so many positives that, that, that I, you know, that helped me to make my, my mind up and to say, yes, uh, I particularly love the fact that the schools can use it to during the week, especially their swimming programs. Swimming programs are not across the county at all, and, and that would be wonderful opportunities for them. Um, the indoor facilities can be used year-round, and that, it, you know, that gives summertime opportunities for kids and jobs and that sort of thing, but also during the other times of the year, um, it is, this is gonna be long-term for our citizens. Not, it's, it's an appeal to parents with athletics, and they've got their kids in athletics as a way for their kids to grow and be around teamwork and that sort of thing. But it also keeps, keeps them busy and out of trouble, and that, this is more opportunity for that personal situation. Thomas will build an aquatic center, it is a beautiful, small facility, if you haven't been there. But I've talked to them, and, and, you know, they're providing jobs for, for the kids in the concession stand on a small scale and that sort of thing. But they also have rent out little rooms where they can have pool parties, you know, and the kids love it. And I have seen, and I asked them, I said, is this not allowing people that could never have afforded a pool opportunity, like in a local, in a local community, like I, I, I have, I, we have one near our house, and it's wonderful. But I just got my bill for the summer, three hundred and eighty-five dollars it's gonna cost me to go to that pool. Sam doesn't swim, I go with the grandkids, but that's a lot of money, that's a lot of money for a private place. This will be o- open to the public. Um, let me see, um, and also, the final thing I wanna say is think about these new companies, think about Edgar, think about Newcore and these new companies that are coming in. This is providing some, another draw for their workers and their workers' families, you know, hey, I'm glad I moved here. We've got this wonderful facility, so, I, I mean, those are the, you know, uh, it's, it's a big plan, it's, it's a long-term plan, but it, it's really about our citizenry, and I think if we get a chance every once in a while to do something that's not something that we have to do, but it's something that will provide an opportunity, then that's the reason I'm for it.
Thank you, Ms. Watford.
I would say my views are, are similar, and I think in the previous meetings, I've, I've kinda spoken, uh, in favor of, uh, this sports complex. I will say, early on, I had similar reservations that Commissioner Watford, um, has mentioned, uh, such as should this belong more to private enterprise? Um, and again, this is a, a conservative body, and that is generally where we, where we sit. Um, that said, for parks like this and sports complexes, there is precedence, um, in this country and in this state, um, for such projects. And so that kind of allayed that concern. Um, the other piece of, of supporting this really ties into what the schools will get out of it. And I see Mr. Johnson's in the audience, and so one of the questions I have been, I've heard and have been asked, and I would wanna, uh, make sure it's covered, is like for schools like North Davison, Oak Grove and Ledford, much further north in the county, are they gonna be able to make the drive down for tournaments or for trainings? I mean, is that, is the distance an issue at all or no?
Those schools, I may, um, utilize, uh, for example, the pools in Western Salem, uh, there's pools in Kerr'sville, there's pools at High Point. So, specifically to those schools, I don't know if they would make that journey down to that area. Uh, I guess that answered your question.
But it would be, of course, open to them if they, if they chose to, and I think that's kind of the, the gist of what I was, was going for. Um, that there are options in the county for the schools, and that they would have availability. Um, the other piece I would say is, you know, I've, I've always been a, a major proponent of education and our teachers in this county. And Thomas, I know I shared with you, if I felt that this project was somehow gonna mitigate what we could do in the area of teacher supplements, um, or again, for our schools, then I, I probably would not support this. Um, I know we have budgeted smartly, and we have the revenue to do this project, which is another reason I feel comfortable with it. Uh, then the last piece I would just mention is just the economic investment that will flow into this county. Um, again, we've, the, the comparisons we looked at, and I, again, I know I touched on this in the last meeting, but in the, I think it was like that county in South Carolina, much smaller than we are, and so even the revenue that we're kinda forecasting, very conservative. And I don't think it takes into account the amount of advertising we're gonna bring in either from some of these corporations in the area. So, I see, again, the revenue being much higher, again, I understand we're going conservative to be smart about it, um, but I think it will easily pay for itself, and again, give citizens in the county a, a destination, and hopefully keep them here. Thank you, Mr. Shale.
Thank you.
I'll basically be just echoing what a lot of my co-commissioners have said, I'm fortunate enough to go with the N, but coming from a business background, being in furniture for twenty years in High Point, naturally, I'm, I'm looking at the economic impact it's gonna have for our county, but also with these folks have mentioned how it's gonna benefit quality of life issues for our families in this county. Folks like Commissioner Elliott that have had to travel all over the country with their children who are involved in sports, we could keep them here. But I'll look at the economic impact it's gonna bring, the fact that if we go ahead and do this, and it's doing all at one time instead of in phases, y'all showed us the numbers, it's gonna save us, probably do it for half what we could do if we, if we draw it out, and it could probably end up being even more. So, the fact that we've got the money, we're not going in debt for it, it's gonna provide quality of life, financial benefits, the schools can use it to train their athletes. I think, I just think it's a win-win in every situation, so I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it.
All right, good deal, I'm gonna say three things, and that'll be it. Um, economic impact, it's a plus, quality of life, it's a plus, uh, positive impact on youth, it's a plus. So, those three alone is enough for me to, and it's self-supported, so anyhow, I'm for it.
Can I have a couple of minutes?
Uh, we're about ready to roll on through this one, so we're gonna, we're, we're gonna discuss it Monday night.
I want a couple of minutes.
Go ahead, Fred. You've had about five already.
Well, that's all right, I asked for that.
I asked for that. If you look on page twenty-two, you see on there at the top of the page, goals for the next five minutes. And that's what we have already done before, if you say, so far as, twenty-two, so far as the bridge out there, Yadkin, that was an affirmative, not a negative. It was voted on the plan, and matter of fact, it was four to three, to approve taking the bridge out there and doing something positive with it. I just wanted to make that clear. I've never been against what you say, I just don't know that all of the, it's going to be this and it's going to do that is the way it's going to be. I've talked to some of them that haven't done as well as he thought. I don't think that's Thomas's problem, but, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, let's roll on to the next item, please.
Twenty-two, Commissioner McCord's got that. So good as goals for the next five years, after you've seen all this stuff from this morning, take a look at these three simple goals. I mean, maintain the tax rate at fifty-four cent or put or lower because of the revow. The revow becoming next year's budget, not this one that we're building, we're talking about today, the twenty-seventh's budget. Now, notices will go out to citizens beginning this fall, leading into the winter time, because, you know, they get their notice of their new number and value in January, and then the bill comes out July one. But the fiscal year impact of the revow will be twenty-twenty-seven's budget. So remember that. We'll be talking a little bit more about it next year at this time. So that's why I put or lower, because the impact of the revow could be, we went through the math the other day, revenue neutral could mean higher values, lower rate, generate same amount of money. Keep our fund balance reserves at fifty percent or greater. And continue with these high priority items, the pay increases for employees, these per pupil spending, whether that, you know, you're talking about local supplements or just per pupil spending in general, because we went through the sheet the other night where we were about sixtieth in the list, and we talked about that some, and these major capital projects. I think if we can keep our eye on these three things, financially, as we move forward, we've done a great job. Look at that fund balance table real quick over the left. I mentioned that earlier. I just want you to see how it ebbs and flows. State recommendation, used to be eight, now it's sixteen. County policy, but look at the, with your eyes, the last ten years. I mean, low thirties, dipped one year down in fifteen, so we did have a dip one year from fourteen to fifteen, and that goes, that, it doesn't necessarily mean we used the cash, it just, again, that math, numerator, denominator thing, we could have transferred more money out that year as well, I wasn't here. But I got here and then the following year, and we've been here thirty-eight, and we got in the forties, fifty. We talked that year about the seventy-seven, how that was artificially high, because we moved all that A R A P money to capital reserve. So we're at fifty, I'm thinking next year's going to be probably in fifty-five to sixty range, somewhere like that. But you see how it ebbs and flows and moves. Mr. Chairman, that gets us to the local supplement section of this. We've only got a couple more topics here. So we know, we talked, I guess when we talked about the budget, we talked about putting some funds up for this proposition of local supplements. Well, let me walk you through a couple slides here, set this up, and I've got Chris here and Ashley, if we need to talk with them about some things. But I talked to Dr. Slate, and I think I got this laid out pretty clear. It's a lot of numbers, but just hang with me. So on twenty-four, what you see is kind of a snapshot of the three school systems and the college. And remember, the college doesn't do budget by pupil, but they're on here because they're education spending. I left them on there, so I want you to see all the education spending. So you got the systems over to the left, the projected A D M, this is their A D M from this current year, because I don't know what it's going to be next year yet. I hadn't got those numbers, so it's liable to change. Now, and sometimes in the past, it's gone down slightly. But however that lays out for the three of them dictates how you chop that pie up. So you were at twenty-three, just under twenty-four thousand kids, as you see. Keep moving to the right. Here's the operating budget under F Y twenty-five adopted, under the green, you see. You got the operating budget for the four of them, the type two and three capital, which remembers just a fancy term for the school buses, the computers, and furnishings, basically. And there's the per pupil amount. The per pupil is based on the operating column, not the capital piece. But I want you to see all the funding. So you see fourteen hundred dollars and seventeen cents, it's all down to the penny. That's the law piece of it, we got to do it down to the penny. Look at this twenty-six projection. Now, you got an operating, type two and three capital, we go up per pupil to fourteen fifty-six point ninety-eight. There's your four point one percent increase. Ironically, that matches your property tax growth, right? Four percent. All right, and then the college moves at three. These change amounts over here are change amounts off the operating and the capital. I circled the county schools, because that's the one we're talking about for the local supplements. Last year's amount we gave them was eight hundred eighty-four thousand dollars and a change. I'm focused on the change, the difference from one year to the next. Now, based on putting some more funds in, it goes to just under one point one million. So change of what, about a hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars for them. I had to put more in, because again, it gets spread amongst the other two. Everybody with me? You put a dollar amount in, so down below, you see with your eyes, total funding increase, three school districts, one point three million dollars. So we're up about three, four hundred thousand dollars from where we were last year, because some of the, the two other school systems siphoned off some of that growth. That's four point one percent. Look at the bottom, total funding for all three last year, twenty-twenty-four, thirty-eight point six, for twenty-five, thirty-eight point nine, that's a three point one percent change. Then from twenty-five to twenty-six, we're at that three point eight percent. Again, just under David's growth on the property tax, ironically enough. Do you see the dollar amount you're putting in? And notice the change with your eyes under capital, all one percent. If I got to help fund something of this nature, if the board chooses to help assist with this supplement, I can't put any more money in that type, I can't grow that type-two capital as well, even though I did move them one point apiece. That's only twenty-five grand. So that divided the money, if that makes sense. Flip over to the next page. All right, so look over to the left, we've got the current D C S local supplement, six point one two five. Remember how this works. State employees is what these certified teachers are, so the state's paying their salary. Then you've got two pieces to this supplement, a local supplement, and the state provides state supplements. You know, we've all talked about it in this room a couple of times about these state supplements, and how they've got a math formula that goes along with it, that takes into account your ability to pay, and your growth, and all that kind of stuff. And so you've all seen that, and I've kind of went around and around with them about why our number's a certain number compared to some of the jurisdictions. Part of it is our ability to pay. We have these funds available and are largely above, they're seeing it as we could raise taxes to pay for some of these things. That's how that mathematical formula works. I don't agree with it, but that's what they've done. So there's not, no arguing with them in terms of moving the state supplement. Hadn't had moved the local supplement since two thousand and six, so I just want you to know that is true. D C S's goal, I'm not saying this is the board's goal, because I'm going to provide you guys with options in just a second. Their goal is to try to get equal to Davian Rowan, which is eight percent. I'll get to the M O U piece in a minute, just save that over, park that over to the side. All right, so this table right here, I know it looks messy, but stay with me. You got current, where it says current twenty-twenty-six, you see the supplement amounts in years one, two, and three. Davidson County Schools provided us with a spreadsheet of their certified staff personnel cost, all of it in, fringes and everything. And what I did was I put the county dollars we've been giving up against that and said, okay, what percentage am I of that total? And as you can see, thirty-four point six seven percent from that top row. Ironically, in twenty-twenty-five, I'm thirty-four point thirty-six percent, I put it at the bottom. Not far off, but when you're dealing with these bigger numbers, a point three tenths is a little bit of a difference. Just keep that in your mind. But you move a whole point, it is a big difference. There's your million fifty-four from the previous sheet. If you were to just fund that for the next three years, in other words, you straight amounted it, nothing would be able to change, we stay at the six point one two five percent. See the far right-hand column where it says D C S contribution? So they wouldn't put any dollars of theirs into this local, just this local supplement piece. If you try to phase this in in one year, move totally to eight percent, go down to the next option, right below it. You just put it in, your cost is going to be, I'm showing you a three-year outlook, right? You move it up in one dose, and you live like that for two, you got eight percent year two and eight percent for year three. It does cost, move your eyes over, one point, just shy of one point seven million dollars. That's a big jump from your one million you're doing now. And then it levels off, because think about it, it's like climbing a roller coaster. You got to climb the hill to get over eight, but then your change off that is just eight off of eight. That's why it levels off. So you see with your eyes, you're still at that same one zero five four seven two four, a seven two five number. You would come back to reality where you are now, but somebody's got to fund that hill. So that's why, and that stays at your thirty-four point six seven or thirty-four point eight nine. You see it even goes up to thirty-five point oh six. So you're staying in that range of you are thirty-four to thirty-five percent of their total personnel cost for certified people. Move down to year phase two, or two-year phase in, you go up to seven points in year one, and then try to get to eight the second year. Little bit smaller, impact, four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, somebody has to come up with, they got to come up with a little bit more in year one than you're willing to go. So you see where I'm going with this, is if you guys are only willing to move to that one zero five four number, somebody's got to come up with that difference. That difference can go into the D C S. Can they do, and I'll get to their fund balance in just a second, can they go into their fund balance and really fund essentially one-time or two-time options equal to these dollar amounts to get them over that hill to get to this place? Year three phase in is even cheaper. It's less impact, it's not cheaper in the sense of, it's going to cost you no matter what you got to get there, but you can see with your eyes, it's about, they have to fork out about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. They got to clear year one and two, and then it levels off. I circled them too, because in my meeting with Dr. Slate, they like year two and three as an option. They didn't really want to push into the one-year option with their fund balance, they weren't quite as confident as I was that they could go in and find the six hundred and do it. They kind of like this option here, but they have a skin in this game. They'll have to provide this far right-hand column. That's where the M O U comes in.
They got plenty of money in their fund balance.
But I'm going to go through that in just a second. That's where the M O U comes in. How to do that? We can, we've talked about this before when we brought this up, how do we, how do we structure this? We can do an M O U just for this concept, just for this set of money. In other words, the money, we will provide X amount, the numbers get extracted off this table and put it into the contract. That here's what we're willing to do for year one, two, and three, and here's what you're willing to do. Flip over to the next page. There's a couple caveats that we got to be aware of. Now, here's their fund balance use, so ten point three million that they have, you know, and as I've told, I've told Chris and them, and Ashley heard me say this the other day, as far as I'm concerned, that's local dollars. They spend federal and state dollars first, anything that would fall to fund balance, this will be local dollars. It has dropped to eight point eight because of the use on these three items, big air-condition items, mostly at Northwest where they had to put, you know, new mechanical room in the boilers and everything. They also have these E S R dollars, where they, you remember that when the COVID stuff came out, they kind of got, and they've had to maneuver through not having those anymore. So again, their confidence of being able to do whatever plans on there, that's up to them. If they want to do year two and three option, you know, I'll defer to them on that one. You would only be coming up with where we are today, unless this board's got willing gracious today and wants to go to the one-six or move to those numbers. Flip over one more.
What's the Northwest, one point six million?
I'll let Chris dive into that one a little harder. It's a, looks like a boiler room.
But it must be north and west, because I don't know, do we have a school northwest?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Because we had to buy, we had to build a new mechanical room, because the electric boiler was original to the building.
I got you.
And the, remember, we'd had to add on to that building over time, so we added new boiler, we had boilers and switch gears, so we had to build a new little building out there beside that.
So you've already spent this money, or, okay. So that's what took you from ten point three down?
Down to the, basically eight and a half.
Where's Northwest at? I'm not so sure I've ever.
Between Enterprise and.
Arcadia area. So me showing them that, again, I go back to, that thirty-four percent that you're contributing of the thing shows you that you're, you kind of was already there last year a little bit, but getting to the million, I guess, they have to put, to me, they need to be putting some dollars into this program if they want to make it go faster. If they want to go in a one-year proposition, then they need to put up the six hundred, because it's one time. It's not forever, right? You're funding the million thereafter. So that was my pitch to Dr. Slate, is you put in some skin, the county commissioners put in some skin in the two together, you decide how fast you want to go. You want to go faster, you go into the fund balance more. That was my proposition to him. You guys are going, I think you're going to love this, so I think those of you that like numbers, I know this again looks like a lot, but follow me on the logic here. I found this, somebody turned me on to this website for D P I where I can find teacher attrition numbers. A lady in Davie County actually gave this to me. And so if you want to look at teacher attrition, this is where you need to go, it's a dashboard. Look at these jurisdictions, and this is just teacher attrition for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. The dashboard wasn't updated for twenty-four, but I got it bookmarked, so when they do update the data, I can get it. Look at us in the green and the two city school systems, and I've got a variety of places on the list, you can see the average at the bottom. We're not that far, we're below the average. It's kind of like I told Dr. Slate, I said, you know, we were at four point eight two years ago, six and a half now. Now, we're going up, I don't know why. Look at the bottom notes, from twenty-three to twenty-four and twenty-four to twenty-five, now we've crept up to nine. Now, I don't know what the other jurisdictions are on here for those timeframes, because I didn't call them all and get all that. I'll get them when they update this dashboard, but, you know, my point is, is it is getting worse for us. Now, the why it's getting worse, is it because of a supplement or something of that nature? I don't know. The far right-hand side is the reasons why people leave, is what I liked about this dashboard. If you back out retirements and terminations, people getting fired, or people just retiring, the what's left, why they left, now, it didn't tell me why, every person, like it didn't say Casey left because of pay, or he just disliked working for the school system, but I can tell you for the row of twenty-twenty-three, we lost seventy-six people out of, we lost seventy-six teachers out of eleven hundred, basically, for that year. Of that seventy-six, twenty-one percent left for other reasons, other than retirement or getting fired. So again, our number's creeping up, sixteen to twenty-one, but it's not the highest on the page. This tells me, as I told Dr. Slate and Ashley, we actually probably are a good place to work. We must be a good place to teach school, or our numbers would be astronomical compared to these other places. The difference is, the far right-hand side, look at you with your eyes, nominal dollar amounts, not percentages, we are the lowest ones on the supplement. So it is ironic that we're great, we must be a great place to work, because we're not turning people over a lot, big percentage, but we are the lowest on the local supplement Two potentially issues stand in the way of if this board were willing to go to the million-dollar deal and try to help them get one of those two options accomplished. And one of them just happened, like last week, and it's on, you know, I don't know if it's got legs or not. So two issues, if the state, you know, you got state employees and local employees, or state employees, the teachers, and sometimes they're funded partially with local dollars. In a bigger system, for the two city school systems, I think they've got it pretty well handled, because they got a small staff. They can fund the state dollars, if the state gives a cola of three percent, those dollars can go to those employees, and you don't have to ask the county for anything. County can't really do that, it got so many more personnel. They got some teachers that are locally funded and state-funded. So if the state cola goes up three, you got to match it, or you got to go to Matt and go, hey, sorry, you're going to get half a raise this year, and Karen's a fully state, you know, paid for, she gets a full, and you don't want to have that conversation. I'm not too scared of that, as long as they don't increase the cola by exorbitant amounts, like go from three to say, all of a sudden, we're going to give twelve. House Bill one ninety-two, though, changes the game. It is a dramatic pay increase for state teachers, proposed. It is a bill that has been proposed. It is huge. I mean, we're talking fifteen percent on average. What it would do is increase the local supplement to the point to where we couldn't afford it. And it's going to do that for every county in North Carolina. That's why I'm not shocked, any North Carolina county's going to be, I hate to say it, not necessarily opposed, but, you know what I mean? It's going to, it's a budget buster for counties, because they would have, they're going to have to fund the supplement as it is, at six percent. You see what I'm saying? Because those salaries go up, the local supplement percentage follows right along with it. If that were to go, and again, I don't know that it's got the legs for two reasons, I don't know that the state's got the money to do these kinds of things, and then I don't know if politically it's the timing is right. I'm not sure. They can only decide that. That would need to be accounted for in this M O U. In other words, if something like this happened, I hate to say it, all bets are off. We're going to have to have a deep conversation between the two of us about supplements in general, much less going eight or six point one, you see what I'm saying? That's a budget buster. So that M O U would have to have some caveats in it like that to protect us, and not stick[1765.01] That's a budget buster. So that MOU would have to have some caveats in it like that to protect us and, and not stick all the funding on them. But I, that's kind of a worst case scenario. And I can't tell you whether by June that thing's gonna go. I, I, again, I feel like it's probably not got the legs to go. But it's one of those things that the lobby for the teachers unions will continue to push and push and push state budget and legislators every year till eventually it moves. So that changes it, that changes the scope for us as well.
Casey, North Carolina don't have a teachers union. We don't, we don't honor unions. But I do want to ask you this question. Uh, how does the voucher system impact these, these projections?
Uh, the, the charter schools in that first slide you saw, the charter schools, the way the money works in North Carolina is we still pay for those kids and the dollars follow the kid. So we give the funding to them and then they pay for the kids that go to charter schools or go to, um, I guess homeschooling as well, right? If it's certified, huh? Just charter schools? So we build that number into that ADM total. We add the charter schools to it or if not, you'd short yourself, right? The dollars get budgeted. You're basically paying for that, but it goes to them and then they pay the charter school. So that's accounted for here. Um.
But the teacher supplement is only for teachers in the county schools.
Right, right. Because the city school, right now, the Lexington, they have a staggered uh local supplement. It's between seven and I think nine percent. The more tenure you got, you get the bigger number. So I just call it eight average. So I'm not, you know, it now, if they want to take their dollars because they got rising tides lift all boats, they picked up some dollars from trying to make this happen, right? I was only willing to go to the million zero five four. So they got some, if they want to increase their supplement as a result of the little bit of change they get, which is like a hundred and twenty thousand, that's their business. I know Thomasville's going to do that because they, they kind of got into a, a little bit of a jam. They are using state supplement dollars to fund their local program, which is a no-no and got dinged on that and have to fix that. So to do that, they gotta unwind their, they're at about six percent as well. I talked to Dr. Williams. He saw this change amount. He thinks for his change amount, which is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, he can fix his problem and go to about seven and a half and make a staggered system like they have. So if, if option two or three is available to approve and go forward with, and then we can make it all work, all three systems will be somewhere between the seven and a half and eight range, a little bit more level.
I got a quick question here. What's Davie County putting in this? I see what we're doing. So Davie is, um, partners in the community college as well, so.
I don't know what they're putting in the community college. We'll look.
Yeah, because I think that needs to be fair now that.
I agree.
If they're not putting anything in, then we don't put anything in. If they are, then.
That's all I have on these options. I mean, again, they don't, there's no, I think, I think, again, you saw where the money can be. We can insert that in the budget. I think if they have their choice, they're gonna try for the two and three option, option. And they'll have to put in some of that fund balance to make that go. The trick will be writing this MOU where it encompasses all this stuff. And says, this is what we're willing to do. This is what you're willing to do. And we got to account for these bills over here in case somebody passes one of these down in Raleigh and then we, we're all having, all one hundred counties is having phone calls in because it's gonna be mucho expensive for everybody.
Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I was just gonna, I think everyone on the board is so aware, but the, the supplement was six percent in nineteen ninety-seven. And it increased to the six point one two five percent in two thousand and six. And like we said, it's been like that for almost twenty years now. Um, I would, I would be more uh for the one year of just going bold at the eight percent, but you said Dr. Slate would prefer the second or third option.
If they're gonna have to put in money. I mean, if you guys are gonna pay the extra six hundred thousand, then they're gonna take it. But if you're gonna, if you're gonna ask them to contribute, they're gonna slow it down to the two and three.
Well, and they've got the, the funds to contribute.
Feel comfortable. I mean, I, you know, I, I asked her again. She's here. She'll tell you. I tried to pitch them, why don't you just go ahead and do it in one year? I think out of six, eight and a half million dollars, we can do six hundred grand, but they didn't feel as comfortable as I did. So they wanted to back it up probably to a two and three year option.
The, the two year then seems like a, a good compromise. Um, like I said, I'd, I'd rather just go bold and go with the eight percent. But if we can kind of compromise and work together on it, the.
The good news is for us, it doesn't change these projections. We're already at the amount that we've said we're gonna do. Does that make sense? We're not move, we don't, if we don't move anything, now it's up to them to put in their contribution and draw out this, this MOU.
I mean, here's what I don't really understand. They, they got eight million dollars in the fund balance. All their money comes from us anyhow, pretty much unless it's the state. But again, you're saying, there's a lot of schools that don't have any fund balance.
Right.
You know, I mean, and they've been very fortunate for years to carry a lot of fund balance. At one time it was.
It did dip down.
Twenty-five million dollars, so.
Or more.
Or more. So, you know, I mean, they had just about as big a budget as we did, our fund balance at the time, you know? And we're running the whole county. So again, and Mr. McClure said before, they didn't get all that just having doughnut fundraisers, you know? I mean, that, that's come, and I remember that. That's an analogy used. So, you know, again, if they need something, we usually try to, try to make it happen here. Um, so Mr. Chris, I guess you can tell me maybe why, and maybe not you, maybe that's a Dr. Slate question. I mean, eight point eight million dollars seems like a pretty nice sized fund balance. Okay. You mind standing up front here? If you don't mind. Now again, keep in mind, a lot of school systems don't have any fund balance. So I feel y'all are pretty blessed to have eight point eight million.
Well, over the last four years, we've been able to build up that fund balance. Um, it was pretty low. And um with the ESSER funds, we've been able to use those funds in order to help do that. Um, our auditors did present in February at our board meeting and um we need to be conservative with that with our size of district. He said between eight to twelve thousand or eight to twelve million is a good fund balance. Um, so I'm just very conservative and I want to make sure that we can sustain this going forward. Because percentage based, say maybe this year with the teachers don't get that huge raise, but next year they do, can we still sustain it?
So you're gonna sustain it out of your fund balance? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, no, I'm just saying like if, we're percentage based supplements instead of like stagger tiers, which is easier to budget for. Um, so going forward, if they, teachers do get a nine to twelve thousand dollar raise a year, that's almost a twenty-four percent increase on the low end. And that would just be more money that we would have to come up with or y'all could help with if that was the case.
I think it'd be more money we'd have to come up with.
Yeah, because the state would pay the salary piece. That's not what I'm concerned about. The local supplement's going to grow off of that.
Right.
And so, but it's such large dollar amounts that it's, it's inconceivable.
But they also seem to do this every year or two where they put forward this sort of pipe dream and it's nice. I'd love for teachers to make a great deal more than they make. But those sorts of bills never actually make it through.
Well, that's why I told Dr. Slate, I, I'm confident I was speaking for this board. I wanted an MOU. I mean, we've got to have something that says, you know, you guys, it's kind of like the, it's kind of like the MOU we proposed when we were talking about the uh, uh, the system the other night, the uh, security system. If it costs changes or somebody else, you know, you wouldn't come back and completely, we've got to have a little bit of that. But again, that would be every county in North Carolina would have this problem, even Mecklenburg County.
And I'm glad you mentioned it because since they voted on that the other night and since I've done a little bit more research, I think electricity bill's gonna go up about three hundred grand a year on these schools. So, you know, that's three hundred grand. It's got to come out of our budget too that we don't have here. These servers that it's gonna take draws more energy and uh, that's just little details that nobody's really thought of. But again, that's three hundred thousand dollars a year. Now I think that's pretty realistic numbers that I've come up with and I've asked some people that's in the business and they agree with me that that's probably a legitimate number. So. Uh, again, I know it's only three hundred thousand out of a hundred and seventy-five million dollar budget, but it's three hundred, I mean, it's three hundred thousand. It all adds up. So, but again, I'm just saying the, the fund balance is really big, you know? Back when it was twenty-five million and I remember how they got the twenty-five million and how that worked and, but you know, then it went down a lot. And um, then it comes back. But you know, most of the day to day funding that you guys need for repairs comes from us anyhow, you know? So you ask for it and if it's an emergency, we fund it. But anyhow, so, you know, I'm for y'all putting some of this fund balance in it.
Okay.
As much as you can. That's what I'm for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. I'm always pretty outspoken.
I've got one, one question. The, the auditor said that, state auditor said that they would like you to be at a, at a eight million dollar budget to have that in there for eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve is what she was saying.
So you're already at the low end of what they said would be a healthy budget like that. But I think what the chairman is saying and, and the rest of commissioners is, is we give you that money and that balance anyhow. So if anything happens, we're gonna be here to take care of the broken pipes, the broken HVAC and stuff like that. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? So it's not that you're just spending it and never get it again. We understand that you're putting in ante in this fund that y'all have done a great job in, in gaining up. But you have our uh dedication to fix things when they break. So I, I agree with the chairman on that aspect.
One of the things that we have um pretty much got accustomed to was splitting the fund balance with the folks whenever they come. They want to do this or do that. We pay half, they pay half. I just want to say that's what we've been doing.
Okay, well, good. Um, any more questions for these folks? All right. Thank y'all very much. Okay.
Thanks.
Um.
So Casey, um, you know, I don't know what the rest of the board, again, to me, if they want to do this, they put the fund balance in the.
Well, you can see by the numbers, they'll be forced to.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, you know, I, I guess whichever way they want to do it, uh.
At this time, if the budget goes through with the million dollars, then it's not gonna be coming back going, you know, help us, they've committed to that. They're gonna have to commit to it. Now the MOU is gonna be the trick to write. How do we?
You know, if they want to get off six hundred thousand of their fund balance, then they can get there quicker. If they don't, then they're driving the bus, you know?
We don't get to decide whether it's the one, two or three year phase?
Well, it's all gonna depend on how much fund balance they want to put in.
Right.
That, that decides the factors, right, Casey?
Yeah, and that would be their call.
Right, that's their call.
Yeah, that's their call.
So if they want to.
Once they let me know, we'll state that in the MOU for posterity so that we know. Because we all get behind, by a buzz, that piece of paper is available to go, okay, it looks like right here they were gonna do a two year plan. It's gonna cost this much. The county was gonna do this much. They're gonna do this much.
So if they want to be aggressive and put more fund balance in, then they get there quicker. So it's in, it's in their court, you know?
Which would be good, given that teachers have waited two decades for a percentage increase.
That's up to them. They in charge of their fund balance, you know?
And to move, Matt, to move them, if, if the board said right now, I want to, go ahead and give them the six hundred thousand. Don't look at it as just that. Remember, if you, you build it in the per pupil number, to give them another six, you're gonna have to go up past that because the other ones are gonna pick up too. So it's probably another million dollar option.
But you, you've had these conversations with Dr. Slate and they're aware of, they're gonna be putting in some of the funds.
And that's why, that's why I like that, the way this is designed, where it was, okay, instead of us going up on Lexington and Thomasville, instead of us having to go rising tides lifts all boats for just exponentially, you put in some one time money and make it go at your pace. And that way we're almost splitting the bill, at least for the first year. You're doing half, I'm doing half.
No, like I said, let's, let's hope it's not the year three because that's a little too conservative. I mean, if we're going bold and doing a sixty-five million dollar project, I, you know, I think we could probably do the year two.
Well, I, I kind of pointed that out too in Canada. I said, you know, for two fifty, I mean, just go on and do the two year one if that's what you're scared of. You know what I mean? I personally was okay with one, but that's, I'm not their books either. So it's.
I agree.
Well, and I'm, I want to say one more thing. As a former teacher, um, you know, um, I was excited if we got a little bit or if we got a lot. You know, uh, because I, um, the first year I taught and the money that I got, I asked, I went to my husband and said, do I need to find another job? And he said, no, no. But um, you know, they're gonna have, we're gonna have lean years. We're gonna have lean years. We're gonna have years where we can't, the, the state or however the organization is, we, uh, we won't get extra money coming from this place or this place or this place. So just having this one item, you know, increased is, is wonderful. And I, I would say thank you on behalf of the teachers, you know?
Pass due for sure.
And you make a good point there because we don't know the cuts that's coming down from Washington. It's probably gonna be cut. And everybody wants them till they start happening in their backyard and they don't want them. But you know, we gotta have them as a, to me, this is just my philosophy. As a country, we gotta have them or we're gonna be broke. And, and the place we're putting our youth in today to have to pay this thirty-seven trillion dollar jet debt off, you know? When I look at these little kids, five years old, that's a problem. It's, we're gonna, uh, this debt's gotta be paid one day, okay? So we've been pretty fortunate. We just keep borrowing. But um, again, so I hear transportation. You talked well ago. The reason we was underfunded in transportation is they cut the, I guess, if I remember this right, they cut the grant a little bit.
The grants got cut.
Right. And we overspent too, right? We, we, we actually maybe didn't keep our eye on it good enough and maybe we overspent.
Well, the dialysis is getting out of control. Now we're looking at it by trip type.
Yeah, the transportation bill dropped four hundred trillion.
Right. So you know, and those grants, those grants may go away. And you know, I, I think one of these things, when, when somebody's grants was done prior to me getting here, it was probably written in there that when the grants go away, the service goes away. Is that pretty much uh?
I don't know if in those, but a lot of the ones we do now, yes. Um, I don't know because that's coming from your NPOs and things like that. Um, and your.
That was something that we put in.
ACCBGs and things like that.
But I'm just saying, everybody knows though, just realistically, if the money goes away, then the service goes away, you know?
They find a way around.
Right. Unless the, unless the taxpayers again wants to be burdened with the, the price or the cost. So anyhow, I won't get into that. That's just philosophy. But anyhow, board pay and volunteer pay.
I've got one, one ahead of that one. Uh, special zoning districts. Lee's gonna come on up. He's in here and talk to you guys about um a quick little thing on special zoning districts.
Is that something, it's got something to do with the budget?
Well, it's got something to do with um, uh, the, the property of the sports complex.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you guys for the opportunity. Um, I'm sitting here, this is my first budget retreat as, as a director and I'm sitting here listening to the board. Commissioner Elliott, Commissioner Watford and Commissioner Kester all hit on things. Travel ball. I coached for twenty years. And keeping kids involved in sports is, there's nothing but positive that, that comes from that. And quality of life. I heard Commissioner Kester talk about quality of life. Um, I was out at the Yakon River Park this weekend and uh giving a tour for Aaron, Aaron Kepley with the Rowan County Museum. We have a very good relationship with them. He has a history class and he asked me to give a tour of the fort. So I, I went out there and then gave the tour. It was hard to find a parking spot in that upper parking lot. Well, all of the, all of the people that were there at that uh, at the playground, absolutely amazing. And so it hits on quality of life. I spoke yesterday to the Davidson County Realtors uh group here in Lexington. And it, it's kind of an unofficial strategy that this board's adopted for quality of life. This board over the last, at least decade, has tried to create a conducive environment for industrial recruitment. Not only physically, but from a permit and regulatory standpoint. Builds tax base, gets you a good, gets your good tax base in. Two, we've, we've searched and I think we struck a balance with uh residential construction. We're, we're, we were always moving that bubble so that, that we don't get the Laurel Oak that swamped Wahlburg. But it's still a sustainable industry in the county. And, and three, quality of life, quality of life. And forgive my voice. I'm, I'm still fighting um horses from the flu a month ago. Quality of life. Um, you guys have, there's been thirteen million dollars spent on parks and recreation in this county over the last six to eight years. Um, the commissioners have only spent like two point three million dollars of that from local money. The rest of that's been, you know, funded from, from grants. That's a really good return on your money. And I went over all the improvements that have taken place with these parks, you know, West Campus, Hughes, Boone's Cave, the Yakon River. Talked a little bit about the uh, the potential for the uh, the Frank property, the Southmont property to the Realtors groups. It was very well received. I was asked to look into potentially creating some type of zoning district that would create a sense of community and somewhat advertise these facilities that we've invested money in. So I started, I started looking at other counties and seeing what, what they were doing and there's a spectrum. And, and very briefly, you know, I looked at everybody that touches us. Uh, Forsyth and Guilford County have an institutional and public uh zoning district. That's a very encompassing thing that cut, has churches, cemeteries, the town hall, all of these different civic uses that are incorporated in it. And then on the other end of the spectrum, Stanley County had what they called a rural recreation district. Um, Stanley County's ordinance is very, very similar to ours. We have an older ordinance. The structure is kind of simple, which I like because when somebody's looking to locate. which I like, because when somebody's looking to locate here, reg- from a regulatory standpoint, there's not this section over here that's a gotcha. You can kind of see what you're up against, and I, and I like that, I like that simplicity. It is a little bit older, and that's why I would recommend, as, as the director, us, or, or open the discussion, see through support on the board, to maybe create some type of, of, like a community recreation district, where we can take our facilities and put them in this district, so, industrial recruitment, when people or industries are looking to come here, they want to see if there's things to do in the county. And if, if you've got some green nodules here, just like Mar mountain State Park in Stanley County, it's on RR, rural recreation. So, so I'm looking to, you know, maybe buy a house there, or locate an industry there, I see that, it's like, there are things to do in this county, so it's, it, it creates a sense of, um, community, and it creates a, uh, you know, it, it is, it can be an industrial recruitment tool. So, I was, wanted to, you know, open the, uh, lines of communication to see if there'd be support, and, and maybe permission for me to create an application to get on an agenda, to, to initiate maybe, uh, of, looking at exploring this, this, uh, new district.
Is there any downside to it? I don't see any downside.
I, 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 if there is, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
I don't see a downside.
Would it be specific to the piece of property we're talking about, or would it be in a general area around that?
It, it, it would be parcel specific, it's not, it wouldn't be an overlay district.
It couldn't prevent, say, if a motel, uh, wanted to come and open, hotel wanted to come and open up there, it wouldn't prevent that.
Well, as, as we build the district, we can include that type of use in the district. And, and it doesn't have to be just-
Particular, it wouldn't need to be done though, would it? Just a regular, a, a normal zoning request, unless you en-
Not unless you want to lease a piece of property to a hotel or something, if you've got enough land.
At, at the basic level, if, when we build this district, if we included that use in that district, it, it could be located there, and, and the benefit could be the approval process may change, or maybe a little bit easier, plus, if I'm looking to buy a house or something, and I see, like, a, a, hypothetically, I say community recreational district, the CR district, that's what's kind of popped in my head, I'll know that there's some activity there, I need to expect activity on that, on that property.
Decide if you want to live close to it or not.
Close to it, yeah, yeah, so it, it's, it's, it's basically an advertisement.
Or not, or not.
It works either way. I'd say bring it on Thursday, and we'll, we'll talk about it for sure, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's all I have, any questions?
I think we're good, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Uh, Casey, I guess the next is board pay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, to make this quick, I don't know what anybody thinks about it, y'all see what Davidson County's paying over here on some of the boards? Uh, and you see what some of the other counties are, are paying, uh, there's only a few that, uh-
I tried to, I got it two separate, the, the chair, and the, the first one's the board member, and the second one's the chair, um, I know it's a mess, but it's kind of like, our column, the average, and then just whatever we fa- it's not got nothing in it, they didn't report anything.
This, this chairman, I thought, if I were gonna look at this as far as what we were gonna do, first thing I'd do was remove Mecklenburg County.
I thought the same thing, because they gotta go-
And the second thing I'd do, remove the two, uh, Board of Health and Social Services Board, that, that landage number that they charge there, not saying that we wouldn't go to that same number, but it runs your averages up, and doesn't really give you a clear picture.
And I'm not even caring about averages, what I'm trying to do here is just trying to give people a fair, um, um-
That's right, yeah.
But you gotta have a target to shoot for.
Well, I mean, my target's gonna kind of come from what's it worth, you know, I mean, what's the tank, not a tank of gas, what does it cost to get to a meeting? Whether that number's fifty bucks, I mean, none of these people's wanting to do this to get rich, uh, but when you come and sit in a meeting for three hours, and you get twenty dollars for it, uh, you know, I don't know what that number should be, maybe fifty, or, um, you know, and these numbers was done a long time ago. These numbers has been the same since I've been here, and it's-
It was dollar twenty-five gas.
Yeah, fourteen years ago, you know what I mean, again, I don't, and I hear you, I mean, I'm looking over at Catawba, they pay thirty-five, you know? Is that a fair price, or is forty, or is fifty? Uh, you know, I do know, when we done the ABC board, we gave them a, a higher price, and, and, uh, because I knew that was going, or we knew that was gonna be a lot of work to run that board, and they went, I think they sell about seven and a half, or eight million dollars a year, uh, and we were thinking they was gonna sell a million and a half, so, they've done a good job.
Well, would you agree that the seventy-five and the hundred is in line, and we need to look at raising the others?
You know, that, some boards may not work as hard as others, uh, and I don't mean to be mean, you know, but, you know, um, so, I'm not so sure, and this can be a Thursday morning meeting, if we want to do it on a Thursday morning, because this meeting here's went a lot longer.
And what, what we need to do is to make sure that we get the information that says, like, for example, I'm on the Aging Advisory Council, that's, that's, that meets something like nine times during the year, so that's what we need to know, when, we need to know-
Right, that's, that's a, that's a good point too, how many times they meet, yeah.
How many times they meet will get you started.
A- and one, one of these things that started this, if y'all remember, is the volunteers that go out and see the nursing homes, you know? They gotta go to three nursing homes, I think, or, wha- what was it, three nursing homes a month? I mean, three, um, every nursing home every three months or something?
Yeah, they did, yeah, and, and all of the adult care homes.
Right, so, you know, these folks are going to a lot of nursing homes, and buying their gas, and I don't think they were making twenty-five dollars a meeting, or nothing, zero.
No, that's not making any.
Zero, that's what it was, yeah.
And all that training that they have to do to, to be, yeah.
Yeah, the training, and, like I say, that's not fair to, to volunteers, you want good volunteers, but-
And I appreciate the businessmen and the citizens that sit on these boards, I think they should be compensated fairly for that.
Can I say one thing about the equalization review board? That hundred dollars is for a, a whole day, there's fifty dollars if they come in for a half a day, just to clarify that.
Hundred dollars for a whole day, okay.
I mean, we're getting steeped.
So, and again, we probably need to make sure some of that, because I didn't know what that, I thought that was per meeting, and I figured their meeting. And again, one way I was gonna talk to, and not that I'm on the board, but the airport, uh, authority board, those guys come once a month, and spend about three hours a night, or three and a half, and, and discuss a lot of business, you know, there's three million dollars worth of hangers and stuff going on over there now, and a couple new businesses coming, I mean, so, and, and again, I don't even know what they make, uh, zero, I guess. I don't think they make anything.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so, I ain't so sure if, if we don't want some, if we want good people serving on some of these, we need to give them a little something.
What we were tasked with originally, and I'm, and was to find out which ones were statutorily created, so that's what this is.
Okay.
But we do, but the, there's other commissions that you all have, have established, and I think that, you know, that statutorily, the airport was created.
I'm with you, I think that you get all that information, and we have it down on Thursday, and we can-
Find out how many times, and the length of the meetings, and, uh,
How many times?
Yeah, if they, once a month, or once a quarter, basically, or, and, you know, I can just tell you, it's hard, it's maybe hard for you to tell how long, uh, but just like the nursing home folks, it was going around, I mean, again, that's a lot of work, and-
Yeah.
Well, and that's in addition to their meetings.
Right.
Because they also meet, and then they have to go do the business.
So, you know, I want to compensate them, they, they getting zero, and, um, talk about advocating for our citizens, that's a, that's about as close to the ground as you get.
What one would that be, you think, serving or?
What, what was that one?
It's the nursing home, um, Community Advisory Committee, and the adult care home.
And who are they under the Health Department, was they under the Health Department, or Social Services?
They're under the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council.
Yeah, so that's kind of outside our scope, and, but it's still our county.
Statutorily, it's statutorily.
Still our volunteers and our citizens, and, and-
Our citizens, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any preference, because I wasn't sure how it-
We might need to add some more to this.
Like the Lake Tomalacs, you know?
So, yeah, if you'll add that one to it, I mean, that wasn't even on there, I don't guess, or maybe it is, and that was a-
Is Tomalacs one of hours?
Yes.
Tomalacs is one of ours.
Okay, maybe we can do that for a Thursday morning meeting, and we'll try to get that done, miscellaneous, uh, topic shirts and clothing, yeah?
Yes, shirts.
I can lead that off if you want me to, I guess Debbie and Mandy's been trying to get some orders together, and I guess there's some people wanting some other things, some-
Just trying to get some parameters on what you all want us to order.
Right, some parameters on, on what it is, so, you know, I know these shirts like this, uh, and, and I guess the reason I brought up this topic, I guess Mandy asked me about four months ago, what size, uh,
Yeah.
And normally, we've got a new commissioner that comes on the board, we order the nice rain jacket, and then we do the shirt orders. And we've tried to keep it, the shirt orders at like two, at two per cycle, and just wanted to, to make sure that we were okay leaving it at that.
Per four-year cycle?
Per two-year cycle.
Two-year cycle, okay.
Well, that's kind of what we want to do today, is set a parameter, you know, do you get one jacket, uh, every two years, and two shirts every two years, or?
No, you only get one jacket, right, only one jacket, only one umbrella.
Okay.
Less of them happen to me, because I know we've had to order a, a second one, I can't remember, I, I don't know whether it was lost or something, we have had to order to replace a jacket, but.
And, and y'all don't mind if, if there's something else that we want personally, I mean, we can pay for it, you know? I, I don't, I think that's okay.
I ordered me a jacket, yeah.
So, but just, just the consensus of the board, what do y'all think's fair, I mean, I want to be fair to the ta- I wear these a lot, okay?
I don't care if they make us anything, I think we can buy all of the clothes.
I know, I know we can.
I mean, I would say just buy your own, and get it put on there, if you want it, that way, I mean, we talking about cutting on everybody else, we can show them, we can cut for ourselves too, you know, I don't mind buying mine, I think that'd be good.
If you're gonna require, um, board members to wear a particular, um, attire, you need to pay them, something.
You should.
Like, if you, they, they don't require us to do the shirts, or the jackets, we're not, they don't say that, because we get them automatic. But if we didn't get them automatic, would there be any initiative for people to buy them, whenever the new board came on?
I mean, I, I don't, I mean, one or two shirts every two years is not a big deal, I can either buy it or, or not.
I don't think it is either.
I don't think it is, anyway.
Well, uh, you go to different agendas, Fred, you know where I'm coming from, but you go to different things. If you don't have them, sure, should I go buy it? And you go to those meetings, and people are not gonna know if you're a county commissioner or not.
Well, that's true, yeah.
And so, I think it gives the opportunity, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I can buy my own, but I think it gives the opportunity for people to say, hey, we got Commissioner McClure's here, Commissioner Yates, Chairman Yates is here, you know? And, and, uh, I think the way we've been doing it, it's not a bad way.
No, it's good, because this is the first time I've heard it there, it, it's on a cycle, I've been here eight years going on, so I didn't know that there was a cycle.
I did though.
I just thought when you needed something, you got too heavy for one, and people need to wear safety glasses, because you're about to shoot a button out, I need a different shirt, you know?
I was gonna hit him up for dry cleaning then.
Most, most of mine come from when I was first elected, I mean, I'm still wearing the same shirts.
Yeah, I've had four shirts.
I don't hardly ever, ever order any when they order, so.
But I know when you guys go out in public, the majority of you wear your branded clothing, so, we just wanted some parameters.
So, what, what is the parameter, is that, uh, one shirt a year?
Do we want to do one shirt a year, or one, or two shirts every other year, or, I mean, we can go to yearly, if you want to.
Let's just do one shirt a year, in that way, you know?
I thought that's the way it was.
But an initial commissioner coming in, can we order two?
Yeah.
They sort of, okay.
Yeah, we generally don't get one a year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, that's, most of the time I don't even order, but again, we need some parameters, because, you know,
We'll get, we'll get Mandy on a yearly cycle then.
She may want three coats and a sports jacket, and, you know, right, 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 right.
Come on, it's a whole wardrobe.
And, and I may want a pair of shoes with a Amelie on it, and-
I can't believe y'all sit around and thought about putting this on this, on this budget thing.
All right, we, well, trying to be transparent.
We're just trying to be, yeah, make it all legit and move forward.
What about badges while we're talking, how does the badges work?
Because I sent in a request for a replacement badge, but I don't need one now, because I won't be here after two years, but you, you need to go ahead and cover that.
Okay.
How does the badges work?
Like with pocket?
No, I'm talking about the pa- the, yeah, the pocket badges, because mine was rusted, where it was outside, and I was like, well, that doesn't look very good.
It's rusted, you gotta replace it.
Yeah.
You need to put it in the house, they may, well-
Don't leave it in moisture.
That probably helps.
I mean, usually you get, when you got yours on, uh, trip, and you got your Amelie, have you got it, they've got you one already. But they usually get one when you're elected, and then if something happens, you break it, you can get another one, sure.
Yeah, not, yeah, but, they get broken or lost, yeah.
That's, that's, that's probably twenty-five dollars, I'm guessing at the most, okay, is that it, uh, Mr. Chairman? I make a motion, will you, uh, adjourn?
Motion, second.
Yeah, all in favor? Thank you.